Meeting. City Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Damian?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
I'll make a. So I believe Councilmember.
I'm here.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez.
So I'll make a motion to excuse Councilmember Hernandez and Council and Mayor Protem Alejandrabila. Can I get a second?
Second.
And Mayor Estrada.
Here. Thank you for that.
Also, I would like to take roll call for the planning commissioners.
Yes.
Planning Commissioner Garrido.
Present.
Borges.
Here.
Enter Sines.
Here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. City Clerk, is there anybody looking to speak?
No, Mayor. Comments will be taken at the end of the presentation, and there's also a feature to provide comments via the chat.
Great. So at this moment, we can move on to the open session, study session.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is Ben Martinez, the city's Community Development Director. We're happy to have made it this far in the process in updating our downtown specific plan. I also just wanted to, so thank you for joining us. Our consultant team, Mayor, City Council, our consultant team, residents and others that have participated in this process. We really appreciate the time and effort also to our fellow city staff members that have helped us get this far. I also wanted to just briefly mention that our new CEO Enrique Saldivar, who is present with us tonight. I was able to, in the few hours that he's been with us, I've been able to brief him as much as I can on this, on this particular item, and I'll be obviously doing more of that in the near future. But welcome, CEO Saldivar. And without further ado, I'd like to turn this over to Ron Garcia, our city planner. And with a note and the caveat that this is an important item for the city moving forward with the downtown specific plan update, but it also definitely keep in mind, it's definitely related to another major project that we are doing, which is the Housing Element Update. And that's because a lot of the housing that we can count and plan for in our Housing Element Update related to our general plan would come from the downtown specific plan. So they are, they are very much connected and should be considered. And we're going to be having, as Ron will explain, hearing on the Housing Element update soon. Thank you, Ron. I'll turn it over to Ron.
Thank you, Ben. And again, welcome our new city manager to this joint study session. Again, good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and the Planning Commission staff and the public. We've been working diligently along with the consultant team, Ron Walla and Associates, since June of last year. We're excited to present to you tonight the draft of this TODs specific plan as we prepare to bring this plan for adoption before the Planning Commission and City Council in August. This plan encompasses all of the work and input presented to the community among the stakeholders. Also would like to remind everyone that this could not be possible without the state of California Housing and Community Development Department, HCD, awarding the city $310,000 through an SB2 planning grant, which essentially helps cities and counties prepare and adopt and implement plans to accelerate housing production. This effort, and I emphasize this effort, assists the city, as Ben mentioned, meet its obligation and comply with the State Regional Housing Needs Assessment referred to as RENA. As you recall in previous presentations, the total number of new housing units allocated for the city of Bolton Park is 1,996 units, which is inclusive of all income categories. As Ben mentioned, on June 23rd, we'll be holding a joint study session with the Council and the Planning Commission to present the draft Housing Element document prior to sending the document to the state for review. As the state requires that cities have an adopted Housing Element, adopted no later than October of this year. As we move on with the presentation, for, we're going to take community comments first and then move on to the Planning Commission and then final comments from the City Council based on the presentation of the draft document. There are two ways that you can do that by raising your hand to allow you to speak, and we will unmute you. Or you can freely just use the chat box to provide your comments for the end of the presentation. So without further ado, I'd like to hand over the baton to our well-respected downtown consultant, Mr. Kaiser Ron Walla.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Mayor Estrada. Councilmembers, Planning Commissioner, welcome, city manager, CEO. Look forward to working with you, sir. And staff and community members, good evening to all of you. The purpose today is for us to continue the process that we've been in for the last nine months or so. And we periodically come to the Planning Commission, periodically come to the City Council, and listen to your thoughts, your feedback, incorporate that, and come back again. And have regular updates. So this is one of those updates with the Planning Commission, City Council. But this is a momentous one because based on the direction we received at the last meeting, the last joint meeting, we have now produced a draft for the downtown specific plan. And we want to walk you through, there is several components of the plan. I'm happy to delve into the details of any specific area that you would like. Some will go through the brief part of the presentation. And then we can hopefully delve into the question and answers. Just to recap, we've had, we started the process back in May. And since then, we've had a number of update meetings with the City Council Planning Commission. We've had focus group meetings with the community, conducted interviews with key stakeholders. And we have hosted a virtual shred. A little bit about that shred in a moment. But that included us working with the community members for a period of three days continuous. And then after the shred, the outcomes of the shred were presented at a council meeting. We want to make sure before we proceeded to get some direction from the City Council. Based on that direction, we have drafted this document for your edification this evening. So we are, we are in June, and we are hoping to complete the environment documentation which is required for this draft plan. And bring this before the Planning Commission and City Council roughly in the July, August timeframe, certainly by fall of this year. So the shred was conducted in a virtual setting, and that's the handsome guy is Ron, sitting as a computer, participating with other community members. Unfortunately, we were at the peak COVID period, and as much as we would like to have engaged the community in person, we were barred for health reasons from doing that. But we have a successful shred, or a three-day period, community members, planning commissioners, city council members participated and provided feedback, including stakeholders from the downtown. And we worked through the three days. The format was, in the afternoon, we had some talks, we presented some ideas, some concepts, some trends, and some information that we had collected on Baldwin Park to make sure that we had a good base to work from. And then in the evening, we started working on concepts. And we would come back, we would present some concepts, we'd get feedback from the community, we'd make amendments, we'd make changes, we'd bring it back, and we worked through the iterative process for a period of three days. At the end, we came up with a consensus master plan for the downtown area. And that was presented, again, as I've mentioned before, to the council before starting documentation. But the question, and I think Ron forced this, why are we doing this? Why are we doing the downtown specific plan? Why is this necessary? And I think as we look around Southern California and the nation, you know, we're all facing a series of crises. Certainly fiscal coming out of COVID and housing crisis, the crisis for equity, health, COVID-related, as well as public health crisis because of the preponderance of cases in terms of diabetes and high blood pressure, particularly in the Southern California region. And then the impending crisis that we face in terms of climate change. And I would submit to you, as I've done before, that the downtown provides a very cogent and a very potent response to all of these crises. And I think that's the reason why the downtown is such an important component. Downtown plan represents such an important component for the city as it moves forward. So I'll cover a couple of items related to fiscal and housing, and we can talk about other prices and how this responds if there is additional interest. But this is, this is your, this is your revenue source. I don't have to remind you, you know this very well. Sales tax and property tax constitute a huge component of your revenue that's coming in. We did a market demand analysis, and part of that market demand was to figure out the leakage that was occurring. Leakage is when a person from your city, from the downtown, goes to a neighboring downtown because those same amenities are not available within that area, within that downtown area. So if I go to, for example, to West Covina, Covina, to shop at the mall, that is dollar that is leaving the community, that's leaving the downtown. And going into neighboring communities. And as he, there's leakage in restaurants, specialty retail, and the specialty retail is experience-based retailing, clothing, and home furnishing appliances. But in addition to that, you can take a look at the development pattern. We'll discuss this a little more. But to emphasize a point, in your downtown area, 50% of the land is dedicated to parking. Now, parking as a use doesn't generate any revenue. It supports, it supports a business, but as acres, there is no revenue generation from that acreage. In addition to that, and we can look at the parking spaces, there are about 1,287 public spaces and 20089 private spaces. Your parking, we did a parking analysis, and this is pre-COVID. So we took a look at the aerials, we took a look at the patterns pre-COVID to figure out the occupancy, the users of the parking. There was about 55% occupancy in public parking spaces and 62% in private. So there is a lot of excess parking in the downtown that is not generating revenues. In addition to that, you have 60% of the businesses in the downtown that don't generate any sales tax. And that's because your downtown is largely geared towards service users, and we'll talk about that as well in a minute or so. Let's, the other crisis is the housing crisis and regardless of the moral issue of providing, you know, our our supply in the Southern California area hasn't kept up with the population growth. As a result of that, we are seeing high prices for housing, which has, which has which has stressed our supply and we're finding, and every time, every time I pass a tent on the street, and it's everywhere, it's not just in downtown LA, it's also in neighborhoods and in long corridors. I cringe because I see that as a failure of my profession, a failure of my being a planner that I haven't been able to provide in whatever capacity that I bear in this crisis. Nevertheless, that's a moral issue. But the state has stepped in and saying, you know what? This is not a, no longer a moral issue, it's going to be a legal issue. You, the region, have to provide a set number of housing units. And the region then comes to the Southern California region, in our case, CAD, comes to Baldwin Park and says, you must provide 2,000 units. That's your legal obligation. It's not moral anymore. You must provide that. Now, where in the city are you going to provide? That's a question. Where are you going to provide 2,000 units? You're a city of 75,000 people. In the past two decades, you have barely grown. It's a fat line growth. Your growth peaked in the 1990s and the 1970s when you had growth first. But since 2000, you actually lost population. So your is the state coming in and saying, fix that. Provide 2,000 more units. And do that in the next eight years. So that's, that's a legal obligation that the city has to meet. And I think the Housing Element discussions that will follow this presentation in a week or so will get into that mode. But again, the downtown presents an opportunity to address this crisis and to address and to provide and increase the supply of housing. This is a highly complex issue, highly complex problem, has many solutions, but one solution that everybody agrees on is we need to increase the supply and keep the supply in peace with population growth to meet the current need, the current demand that exists in the community. I'm not even talking about future demand or future growth. So that's, those are a few reasons. In addition to that, there were some boundary adjustments that were made to the existing specific plan. You already have a specific plan for the downtown area that was adopted in 2016. We, at the bottom, you're seeing the boundaries on the right-hand corner, the existing boundaries of that specific area. And in this, in the proposed specific plan that we have before you today, tonight, we've amended those boundaries, and we've amended them for a number of reasons. One, to correct some errors. That senior building that you see right across the city hall, it's half in the downtown specific plan and half outside. That doesn't make sense. So we have corrected that. Then there are some opportunities that were brought to light, such as the the county public worksite, triangular site north of Ramona. That was added. In addition to that, we considered providing, and this is direct feedback that we received at the community meetings. The community was interested in having more properties south of the rail tracks, south of Downing, to be added to the specific plan. Some of those are single-family residences facing parking lot in a station. That just didn't make sense in, for the long term. So allowing that to be incorporated and allowing that buffer actually protects existing single-family residential neighborhoods around the downtown area. So we have expanded the boundaries of the specific area, specific planning area. There are three main objectives, and they are interrelated. The first one is place. And when we talk about place, we're talking about experience, creating a distinctive advantage. A distinctive place that is very distinctively Baldwin Park because it is building off the assets that you have that are unique to your place that other cities don't have. So that creates a distinct economic development and distinctive marketing advantage. And we're going to take a look there at public realm design, creating contextual infill, infill that provides the units, provides retail, provides all of the amenities that you need, but at the same time is respectful of the context, the context, particularly at edges where it shares edges with the neighborhood. And we have addressed that both in the plan as well as in the code. And then building off your arts and culture and leveraging the arts and culture to encourage prosperity, to encourage local businesses, and to encourage entrepreneurship, and to have smart policies about patterns of development. Again, I'll have a couple of slides that I want to share about the patterns of development and the and the prosperity resulting from different patterns of development. So we have options, and we can think about those options as we think about the future. And then in terms of mobility, we want to accommodate all modes. Certainly, you don't want to disturb any of the driving patterns that you have of. But in addition to that, look at streets to also provide for bike lanes, to also provide for safe, comfortable, and enjoyable walking paths for people who don't want to walk. And using existing parking more efficiently perhaps than you currently are. So these are three interrelated concepts, and I'm going to be all over the place. The presentation is not broken down into distinct sections, and you'll see why. So in terms of patterns of development, on the upper-left corner is a very early diagram of downtown Baldwin Park in 1927. So if you think about 1927, what's happening? You have transit line running on Ramona, you have the red line. And most of the development is either sold by transit or by walking. Only the very affluent people have cars in the 1927s. But look at the pattern of development. Look at the grid. You have a very interesting grid. You have a north-south grid that is almost rectilinear, but then you have this diagonal grid that comes and intersects with Ramona and creates wonderful opportunities for public rail enhancements. The comparable example of people who have traveled to New York City will know what Broadway does in Manhattan, where it diagonally cuts the grid. So there is wonderful grid system that you already had. And particularly notice the downtown grid. As you get closer to the downtown, the grid gets more granular. You have more options to get around. It's more walkable. You have more options on how you move around. Now look at the pattern of development that you have today. You have the aerial on one side, and I recognize it's a little difficult to read. So what we have done is we've taken essentially a figure ground drawing. So what you see in color are the buildings. And what you see in white is the ground. And as you can see the grid pattern, you see the grid pattern come in, but when you come to downtown, that pattern begins to break apart. You're seeing more sort of open space, more of white. And that's directly related to the influence of the automobile automobile requiring more space for parking, more space for moving around, requiring larger blocks. In many cases, streets were vacated to make room for for large developments with large parking lots. So this is your downtown today. This is an aerial from from, they can recently. And I have to say, at first impression, and even the lasting impression that I have of the downtown is you have wonderful assets. You have wonderful assets in Morgan Park. I think it's a gem. I mean, all of the things that you have in terms of programming and structure, it's one of a kind. You have the train station, you have the civic presence, you have city hall. And you have arts and you have the art center with the historical museum. And you have retail, you have essentially retail that's close to the community. Besides the adjoining neighborhood, you have three grocery stores and three or four ice cream stores, just in a small area, which is, which is just phenomenal. So you have all of these assets. And then when we're looking at it, how do you link these assets? Because what we heard when we interviewed people, and we also talked to council members, I know in the very first meeting, many of you grew up in Baldwin Park, and you remember walking to the downtown for ice cream or just hanging out. You can't do that today. You can't walk around. It's not really walkable. And even riding, we were told by a few people during the interview, is a little bit of challenge because of how certain streets are configured. So there are some issues that that we wanted to address in the specific plan effort that were brought up by the community. In particular, looking at opportunities to link these assets. So as we look at the downtown area, and what you see here is a five-minute walk. That is essentially a template that we use. People tend to walk five minutes before they will get in the car. So we want to have neighborhoods and districts that are walkable, that are mixed-use, so that people have options to walk in addition to driving around. And they can walk to the daily needs, they can walk to the park. So you have all these assets in the colored in black. And the best opportunity to link these assets is to look at your public realm, to look at your existing streets, and to look at the open spaces, and to weave these together. And obviously, besides the open spaces, the private facades, the frontages also play an important role. Because if you're walking from A to B, if you're walking a shopping center or parking lot, that's one experience versus if you're walking a Main Street environment with shops along the frontage with windows that display the merchandise with street trees. That's a completely different experience. So that experience needs to be curated as well for the downtown area. So we start with the streets. Ramona is your signature corridor. And, you know, like, we're getting in the summer months, and oftentimes you see the weather report, and the weather report will say, well, it's 90 degrees, but it feels like 110. Well, the same with Ramona. It is 100 feet wide, but it feels like it's twice as big. And the reason for that is because you have the right-of-way, but then beyond the right-of-way, you essentially have parking lots. So spatially, it feels like a larger space. Now imagine all of us are in a virtual setting. Imagine the room you are in. Right? Look around and think about the walls that you have. Now imagine the walls being pushed apart 20 feet, and how would you feel in that space? Or imagine your roof being not eight or nine feet, which is probably what it is. But imagine it being 50 feet with the same dimension. How would you feel? So we react differently to different spaces. The spatial proportion of streets and open spaces is incredibly important. So you have two lanes in either direction, and then you have, on either side, you have a continuous row of perpendicular parking, angled parking. And over the years, you have made attempts to soften the landscape, add trees. But think about, again, the scale, and I'm going to show you what the shred, the outcome of the shred. So just by adding street trees, and in this case, the choice is sequoia. Sequoia has, is a very fast-growing tree and has a high canopy. What you're doing is essentially you're subdividing that space. So instead of it being 200 feet wide, now you're perceiving it as 10 feet or 20 feet quadrants with a ceiling, where the human being feels comfortable. Now imagine being a human being on the section above, and imagine being a human being in that environment on the section below. So this is interim. And we're not changing any of the building footprints, the buildings are where they are. But imagine adding more of the street trees, adding protected bike lanes, on-street parking. So on-street parking is still there. It's preserved. It's not angled. And imagine creating a promenade. And if you do all of those things, you know, people will want to bring their buildings closer. And you certainly have a room then, an outdoor room that feels comfortable, that becomes your signature corridor. And that could transition from something that looks like this today And and that could transition from something that looks like this today to something that could um begin to look. Um uh uh like a like a place, uh like a place that is unique, that builds on local assets. Um where your street doesn't feel like it's two hundred feet, uh but you're perceiving it in smaller chunks. Because it now has a ceiling and that ceiling is the is a canopy of the trees, uh and and it has amenities. Um that 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 are along the street's edge that make the pedestrian feel comfortable. Um so in this case, um. The long-range scenario, and this is this is a uh all of the things that we're presenting today. Uh and and we presented and we discussed at the community are a panoply of ideas, uh you know, for you to select from. It's a menu of items. Uh you do what you like, um and you do what makes sense at whatever timeframe. And you build off of it. Um so these are not hard and fast, the plan doesn't uh live and die. On any one concept, but collectively they create uh the overall community vision. So I'm gonna walk you through the individual pieces, uh and 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 you can collectively keep put these pieces of the puzzle together. Uh at in in whatever configuration uh you so desire uh as 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 you uh implement the plan. So uh one of the things that we considered is you have this parking area in the front. Which was essentially came into being because you had uh you you had a transit line uh going through Ramona, which was vacated. The trolley line went away, you had this access right of way, uh and and you converted into angle parking. Um that angle parking uh is at best fifty percent used. Um so you have access parking. Now, what we are suggesting is maybe reconceptualizing that space and it could still be a parking lot. So all of this could still allow parking and could be resurfaced or re-repurposed. Uh on 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 certain days to allow for uh users' open space. So it's not something that. Uh you need to do as a permanent change, it could be temporary. Uh you could do it all weekend, you could uh and and take it away. And 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 return it back to its parking use. So so think about these things. Obviously, the tree placement, uh where you place the trees would would become important component of that. Uh and we need to give give that some thought. But the thought again is to perceive this as a as a promenade. Uh that begins to activate uh this this boulevard and creates and activate the frontage. Uh along 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 that along that edge uh along Ramona. And it's only uh it is uh a particular section uh of Ramona, it's not a continuous uh promenade. The the other um uh I uh item that we that we addressed besides Ramona. Uh is is the linkage between uh your two assets. You have you have a wonderful asset uh in 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 the station. Uh it's it's your connection to the region. Uh it brings in riders, um the potential tourists, potential spenders. Uh in your downtown uh from the region. Um but your downtown eh you sort of have a disconnect right now. Because the platform is on the south side instead of the north side, which is which is the site uh where where you have uh your downtown. Um so uh there are there are various ways to look at it, uh some short-term, some long-term. Uh and we had some initial discussions with MetroLink. Uh they have some plans for the future with how they wanna proceed. Uh they have one track right now, they may be looking at two tracks, which might provide opportunities to discuss. How the station functions and how the station relates to uh the downtown area, whether it relates to the residential community to the south. Or whether it relates to the downtown uh that you have uh to the north. Um and and we were looking at how best to establish these connections. Obviously, you have opportunities at Pacific. Uh to enhance the connection from the station uh all the way to the Pacific, uh Pacific Avenue and then Main. Uh that connects into downtown. But if you're looking north, um improve the connection. Uh uh at 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 the at the northern junction, but you also have an opportunity to create something midpoint. And that could be this connection um that that uh you have from from where you have a garage, right next to the garage. Opening up into Ramona. So you'd be a connection from the station uh to Ramona. The caveat is that uh MetroLink needs to approve a a a a a a. Platform or upgrade crossing that would allow people uh to cross. Uh and that's that's a long shot, that requires a number of studies. Um but again, the these are presented as ideas uh to pursue in the plan. Uh as options, we have a couple of options, an interim option that shows. Um what if MetroLink says, no, that's not gonna happen? Um but what if MetroLink wants to play and says, yeah, we are we're doing two tracks, we are redoing the station? Um there are opportunities that the city can entertain. Uh and that experience uh for of of the alley could be enhanced. It doesn't have to be a back-of-the-room operation. Uh lighting, landscaping, um can can be a critical role. And activating that dead frontage, activating the frontages uh of that alley uh could also. Um create a better link between the station and the downtown. Um and then Baldwin Park Station, um you know, eh eh wouldn't be great, eh I mean, your name says it, Baldwin Park. And you come to the station, would be great to have a park right at the station. It doesn't have to be a park, it can be a plaza. But some kind of open space that ga- that serves as a gathering space rather than opening up into a parking lot. Um and uh we're looking at mobility hubs uh at the station. Mobility hubs are essentially places where. Once you get off the train, your first mile, last mile connection can happen in a variety of modes of transportation. Doesn't have to be an automobile, it could be an automobile, but it doesn't have to be a single-driven automobile. It can be a shared automobile, it can be micro-transit, it can be. Uh bikes, shared bikes, shared scooters, a number of opportunities. The the important concept here is curb management. Uh what you allow to be parked. Uh along the curb's edge, whether it's a bus, whether it's transit, whether it's um uh shared automobiles or electrical cars. Uh but looking at those options and looking at the space at the station. Um in in and uh uh enhancing the pedestrian experience uh at that station. The other concept is i- is about network and network is about connections, providing many opportunities for people to get uh from one place to another. Again, at the interviews uh that we conducted with stakeholders, we we were told that uh it's difficult to walk. Um in in the downtown area, because you have these large parking lots. And um eh we're we're looking at how and you have a grid system, it's just been clipped in a number of places. So wherever it's clipped, you have opportunity to reintroduce that grid and reintroduce those connections. Um one of the things that we looked at uh is is crossings. Um the 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 frontage between Baldwin Park Boulevard and Main Avenue is thirteen hundred feet, that's a quarter mile. So if you wanna cross, you have to walk quarter mile to cross uh Ramona Avenue. Uh and that's not very ideal. In the downtown, it should be uh they should be a crossing every two hundred, two hundred and fifty feet. Um eh eh in this case, we're proposing a crossing right at Stolling, uh which allows people an opportunity. It's a mid-block crossing. Um that allows people to cross another one along uh between Main and Bogart. Uh which can provide again that link to the uh to the train station. Um through the through the through the alley that runs by the parking garage. Um and and the the frontage right now between Main and Bogart is eight hundred feet. Again, that's excessive. Uh without having a a an opportunity to cross. So we're looking at how to connect, how to make these connections, how to enhance the intersections. So they serve for the automobile, but they also serve for for bikes and for people who uh who choose to walk. Um we've taken a uh a a a great deal of attention, paid a great deal of attention on the landscaping. Um different landscape, different trees for the different environments, different places uh that we are trying to create throughout downtown. Uh and and uh create a palette uh of of trees that provide rich diversity. Uh but again, looking at um that that concept that we were talking about, you have these assets in the downtown. And we wanna connect them with the public realm. The public realm needs to be interesting, uh comfortable and safe. Uh and uh and the uh the open spaces and the in the streets provide that opportunity for those connections. Uh we're during the interview, we uh talked to the person who uh runs the Baldwin Park Plaza. Uh and um a couple of individuals suggested um that they were interested in long-term plans. Uh for redeveloping that site, uh and uh based on uh some of the interactions we had. Uh they were interested in doing mixed-use development. So this is just one of several configurations that could occur. But it it again begins to talk about the quality of development, um the things that uh. Planning Commission, City Council and the staff can be looking at uh when when they approve uh redevelopment on that parcel. Whenever that occurs, it may occur in the next five years, ten, twenty years, uh or 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 next fifty years beyond this planning cycle. Um but uh as as you look at um the the aerial drawing or or pardon me, the the rendering at the bottom, it shows the. Uh pattern of development, um which could um which could be four or uh four-story buildings along Ramona. But they step back as they come into the neighborhood, as they meet the neighborhood uh into two uh into three and two-story buildings. Uh that that are arranged around a new park site uh for that for that neighborhood. Um branding is an important concept. Uh again, it helps um 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 uh increase civic pride. Uh um address some out-of-date perceptions about the city or the downtown if if uh they're present. Uh and and place Baldwin Park uh on on a map. Um one look, one message. Uh present a distinctive and compelling vision. And and what we have done is we've pointed out uh some locations in the downtown. That are your gateway sites, that are paths, that are nodes, that are edges that need to be identified and branded. And we provided a initial palette. Uh obviously, uh uh you you need to uh run this uh and. And give it some detailed thought about the design, but we've gotten your started of uh the various components that. Are going to uh creating branding uh in a sign package for for the downtown area. Design can uh can follow, the detailed design of the construction drawings can follow you. Um we have worked with your uh with your community service uh department and uh we've identified. The parade roads, the street closures, uh you guys are potty town, you know how to throw a party. Throw a party and fifteen thousand people from the region come to it. Um I'm 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 looking forward to that um in in the future. Uh unfortunate that we couldn't uh experience that during this planning cycle because of COVID. Um but we're we're wanting to celebrate that, we wanna make sure that all you have the right frontages uh that can take advantage. Uh you have some dead frontages in your downtown area, particularly on the south side of Ramona. Uh that could be lined, for example, with outdoor cafes, micro retail. Uh and then uh in the new neighborhoods, you can uh reconceptualize and use the streets. I mean, eh there's a concept of Sunday streets. Uh on Sunday, you close some of these streets in the residential neighborhood and and give it to the kids. Uh let the kids uh go out and have fun. And this is, these are areas that aren't parts. So these are, these are again, user like utilizing public realm, utilizing streets. Uh not just as places for moving cars, but for bikes, for walking. And and uh and as open space uh and as part of the open space network. Um the downtown mix, uh this this uh just getting back to the economic development component. Uh uh seventy-five percent of your uh of your downtown jobs are mom and pop uh businesses. You have a high focus on service sector, about forty-five or forty-four percent of your jobs are in the service section. And and therefore sixty percent don't pay sales tax. Um eighteen percent uh is is grocery, retail, grocery stores. And general merchandise are your largest employer uh in the downtown. Uh you have a very small component, ten percent of restaurant. And I think that needs to grow and as you saw the leakage diagram, that's where you have a great potential to increase your productivity. Um but even those ten percent, uh sixty-three percent of those spaces are fast-food restaurants. Uh there's nothing against fast food, but that's not your distinct advantage. A fast-food establishment in your town and in a neighboring town eh eh has the same one. You're only gonna attract people from your from your from your from your community. Uh you're not gonna attract people from neighboring town. Uh because there's nothing special, nothing distinctive about uh the food that is offered there. See eh that needs to be given some thought. Um sixty-three percent of the businesses, again, in the area, don't generate sales tax. Uh shopping centers uh. Uh account for about sixty percent of your retail space. Uh I wanted to present these two slides. Uh this is work that was just completed um a couple of weeks ago in Montebello. This is urban three, uh Joe Minakusi, uh who was part of our team, uh did this presentation on fiscal MRI for the city of Montebello. But I think there's some lessons that might uh be of value. Um uh because this is, uh he's done this for a number of Southern California towns, including. Um uh towns all over uh all over this country and and uh all over the globe. Um so the so the lessons are very uh transportable. Um and what we're looking at here is uh is is uh revenues per acre. So if you look at revenues per acre for a shopping center, for example, in Montebello, Montebello Town Center. Uh eh it generates one point seven million dollars per acre of revenue. That's what can be taxed. That's what comes to the city's coffe after it being taxed at that level. Uh comparatively, uh Walmarts anywhere uh in 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 Southern California are averaging about two million dollars. So that's that's just sort of a a benchmark. And you can go around and look at the shops at Montebello, it's five million dollars per acre. So this is uh uh how much revenue is coming into the city's coffe in terms of property tax. Uh when you tax it at five million dollars. For Montebello Plaza, it's three million dollars. Now now remember these numbers, three million, five million, Walmart is at two million. Compare that with this Beverly uh corridor. This is a corridor uh in the heart of Montebello. Um those buildings, that two-story building is generating eleven million dollars, over eleven million dollars per acre. Building next to it is seven point five million, and building next to that is ten point three million. Now, the concept is very simple. Um and and I like to think about this, uh and and Joe describes it as as when you are in farming. And you and you you're 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 concerned about how much productivity you can get from your acre. You plant your trees uh in a in a row. You don't plant uh five trees in an acre and and uh. Uh you know, that your productivity will be only the crop that you yield from those five trees. You plant them in a row, uh when you have a campfire, for example. The way you have a fire, the way you have uh economic fire and energy in your downtown. Is you bring things together, you bring the wooden blocks close together. You can't have wooden blocks away from each other and hope that they will ignite each other. The same concept applies in your downtown. They need to be close to each other, they need to be stacked over each other uh to produce value. And when you do that, the values that they produce compared to the shopping centers is far, far more. At least two or three times more. And we've shown that in Montebello and we've shown that in a number of other cities uh across America. So uh the pattern of development is incredibly important. This is reflecting the pattern. This is also walkable, this is also. Uh drivable, um so it it allows for both uh walking, driving and biking experience to occur. Um now one of the things that we uh this also allows for is eh eh and and supports is entrepreneurial businesses. Uh particularly marker space incubator-type businesses. Um these are, these are often described as hot sauce. Handbags and hardware. Um eh eh you know, oftentimes, if you take a look at your business license, particularly during during COVID. If you take a look at who is having a business license in Baldwin Park. Uh and and you see people operating from the garages, or you see people operating from the kitchens. Uh and they wanna expand. Where do they expand? Downtown is a great place for that expansion to occur. And if you think about these spaces which you already have in your downtown. Some of them are underperforming, uh to be occupied with local entrepreneurs. Uh you're also addressing the equity issue, making uh economic wealth and uh and making the community part of that. Uh uh wealth-growing uh enterprise. Um these are typically one-of-five people, uh small businesses. Um obviously, uh the the failure rate uh in in small business and particularly entrepreneur businesses is great. Uh but you know, people keep on trying and and you work through.
Thank you, yeah.
Uh I'm sorry. Is that a word for me to stop? Uh I'm sorry.
Robert, if you can mute Robert, thank you, Robert.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Uh so so these are small businesses and uh and and they require anywhere from uh five hundred to eight hundred acres. Uh they are small cottage industries, manufacturing, producing uh products, producing stuff. Um and 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 some of that stuff can also be offered. Um and 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 some of that stuff can also be offered as retail. Now, what's unique about this is because this is small scale, the wealth remains in the community. So every dollar that you spend here remains in the community because it's local. Uh and it provides a distinct advantage, which you can't find here, you cannot find online, you cannot find in neighboring city. So this is really important uh and something that needs to be looked at. Uh in addition to that, one of the things we found missing uh in Bolin Park that 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 you could suddenly use uh is is and we've made this part of the recommendation is, is to enhance your economic capacity, particularly uh have somebody who's sole business uh nine to five is downtown Bolin Park. Um somebody who can, who who, you know, uh a business improvement district is one of the models, and there are various models that you can look at. But successful downtowns have uh maintenance programs, they have security programs, um they have marketing programs and all of this. And they operate uh in a proactive uh mode rather than a reactive mode. Um right now, Ron's taking whatever comes at the front desk uh and processing that permit. Uh he's not going out and seeking those small businesses and and uh looking who's willing to expand and who's willing to move from their garage uh or kitchen in the downtown area. So having that focus uh in the downtown might also be uh something that uh the city may wanna look at. Um in the plan, uh we uh have a funding toolbox. We've identified a number of funding options. Um uh from special district financing tools to grant straight uh local and federal programs uh to working with developers uh in in many areas and through agreements to to get these improvements uh and uh public private initiatives. And what you see uh on the right hand side is is a small uh table from the, from the plan document. Uh I just wanted to present this as as an example. You can take a look at uh in much more detail. There are series of policies and for each policy in action, uh we're calling out a timeframe. Uh we're calling out who the responsible parties are uh that will, that will carry out that task. And we've sort of assigned dollar values. This is like um almost like a travel guide. Um this gives you a sense of what the low hanging fruits are, things that uh uh you may wanna do immediately or or uh in in short timeframe because it doesn't really cost money, just takes some uh initiative. Uh but there are other things that you may want to uh plan for the future that might require um a longer term planning. And then the funding sources are also called out. Um here's the interim plan. The interim plan pulls together uh various public realm improvements, uh open spaces, streets uh and uh some development that uh uh either has expressed interest uh with the cities or or the city council has uh has issued some ENAs uh that we know are impending, uh that there is interest uh for these parcels. So we've identified those uh as phase one. Uh obviously, this is completely flexible and and things can move around. Um but i- i- what we wanted to create is a an interim plan that shows how Ramona, for example, could go from its existing condition to the final condition. Well, it's a series of steps, series of small steps that you can take depending on your funding uh availability and depending on when uh people are bringing their development applications uh to engage uh in 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 private agreements and in public private uh arrangements to get to your final vision uh by working through smaller uh bits and pieces. So this is the interim, this is the final. Um and the final, again, uh it's, this is not a twenty year plan. Um the the this may, this may not even happen in our lifetime. Um but it's working with the end in mind. And having the end in mind uh and then working backwards. Uh so this is, this is the grand vision, a hundred year plan. Uh and then uh we can take incremental steps uh towards, towards that uh greater whole. And then here's uh sort of an aerial view of of the um of of the downtown area. Again, um Ramona Boulevard is your signature boulevard. Um eh with a little bit of TLC, it becomes a signature corridor uh in San Gabriel Valley and uh hopefully in in Southern California. Uh and and begins to connect all of your assets together uh with uh some existing and new open spaces. Um and then uh uh having the right frontages um for development uh creates a very comfortable and safe and walking environment, including uh driving. Again, I wanna emphasize, we're not reducing any lanes uh in in Ramona, uh whatever. Uh the two lanes in each direction still exist, we're just enhancing um the other component, which is to making it bike friendly, making it walkable, making it uh sustainable where uh people will wanna come closer uh and and open up businesses along that corridor. Um oftentimes, um you know, this is where the plan stops, uh because this is a vision. Uh and as I mentioned, this is a panoply of ideas that you select from. Uh you select what you like, you build what you like uh in in the increment that makes the most sense at that time. Um but the regulating document uh is is oftentimes disconnected. Uh and and we wanted to make sure that y- you were not, you were not in the same uh board. So we we've created a a very unique uh place based code that is very specific to the place. Now, walk you through some of the components. This is a regulating plan. And in contrast to the zoning path, uh most of your planning uh commissioners will recognize, you know, zoning plan doesn't show proposed open space. Uh this one shows that. This one shows a proposed open space. The focus of this plan is a public realm, not the private realm. And the private realm, uh what happens in terms of users is left up to the market. So it's a very market friendly approach. Rather than calling out users and users, pages of users and users, uh it defines users more generally uh but defines um the public realm uh with with a higher degree of focus. Uh w- w- in in order to create contextual infill development, um all of these districts uh have um a a a massing diagram that you see on the right hand side, where you can add a level. So if a four story building is allowed, you can add a fifth story, provided you take comparable uh amount of square footage out from the back where it meets the residential community. Um so you're creating a very contextual building mass. Um in in terms of the regulating plan, um the the corner of Ramona and Main has the most intense uh development in the downtown, that's your hundred percent intersection. And as you walk away from that intersection, you have the orange, which is the corridor, which is slightly less intense. And then um the surrounding area, which is the downtown edge, which is where uh the downtown meets the neighborhood, is even um uh less uh intense, almost to the same intensity as a, as a single family residential neighborhood uh that it abuts. And then there are some special features um that we have called out um in in the we're not gonna regulate, we're not gonna require retail on all building corners, because the last thing we want is to require it and for retail use uh to to remain fallow because the market's not there. But what we are saying is, in very key intersections, um you will provide frontages that are not dead walls. You'll provide shop fronts uh that allow people to engage. Uh and those are called out in uh in yellow lines uh at the corner of Main and Ramona. And then uh there are some other lines, other dotted lines that you're seeing, which is essentially creating a building enclosure, an outdoor space with building mass. And that's important because if you're driving around and you don't have a vertical frame of reference, you don't know whether to turn left or right. But if you have a building there, then you know that building is defining where the street is, because the space between the buildings is a street. So we are, we're calling out for certain spatial enclosures for place making, but also for uh for for vehicular safety. Uh this, these are pages from the code that talk about setbacks, that talk about height, but also talk about uh open spaces. So we are not just talking about open spaces that would be required for larger proj- projects to provide public open spaces, but also a continuum of open spaces that are provided on the private lot. So if you have a single family residence that that private lot happens to be in in the yards, but if you have a courtyard building that that happens to be in the courtyard, or if you have an apartment building, you could provide balconies and terraces. So all of those requirements for open spaces, private open spaces are also called out, calling out building sizes and separations to make sure uh they're not block scale buildings. Uh and then frontages become incredibly important um to avoid dead frontages. And you have some of them in your downtown area, particularly on Ramona. Um different building types have different frontages. If you have a retail, you want to have a flushed uh retail with the street's edge uh that is transparent to allow people to see through. But if you have a residential building, it's quite the opposite. You want privacy. So you want the plinth of the residential building to be raised and and further away from the street. So those frontages are called out and spelled out in this code with very uh broad uh broad standards. Uh here's an important concept that we discussed, and I think a couple of your council members have suggested they're big fans of uh making sure that uh the architecture in the city, uh and and particularly the building masses uh are 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 better articulated than the ones that they uh have seen in many places. Um here's what happens. When you have a lot, uh when you have a block, uh such as the one that uh has been drawn on the uh upper left corner, uh and you give people a density or an FAR, uh people extrude that, like a tub of butter. So if you have an FAR of one uh or or two or three or four, uh you exclude that for four stories. Um and then you have design guidelines, and the design guidelines come in and try to break that box and pre it up, right? But it's still a box. And that's what you're seeing in many of the cities, many of your neighboring cities. In fact, Ron will recognize the one of the uh in the right hand corner, because that's uh that's the city that he used to work for uh before he joined Bolin Park. Um so this, this, we're trying to address this and then this, make it, make it more contextual um to to the, to the context that it is in. Um and and here's the concept of contextual density. This is a project done by uh our partners in the Shret, uh Molin Polozoid, um at uh South Pasadena uh Station. Um and what you see um in uh on on the upper right hand corner, the small graphic, is what the code would allow them to build, which is a three story building that is almost rectilinear, a block. And yes, they could break that block uh and create some open spaces, but it's still a block. But the context around this is a single family residential neighborhood. Um so what they chose to do here is instead of um creating the block, they 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 created a series of building types with frontages that are uh in in sync with the context. So where the building meets the station, you have a different type of building. You have, you have, you have the brick building that is three stories. Um and where it's meeting the neighborhood in the back, you have a more um residential type architecture that mimics. Uh it's still three stories, but you can tell that it's three stories. And sitting right across from uh a single family residential neighborhood. So now compare this project to this. And it's completely different. This is a block scale extruded uh up four stories. Uh this is that same type of building, but it's designed uh in a manner uh to be contextual. Um so you're providing units, but at the same time, uh you're responding to the context. And 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 there are, there are ways to do that. And this is a diagram in the code. Uh we we describe how to do that. You have a block. You you divide it with uh streets and alleys, and then you place uh the different building types for different contexts. So if you have a main street, you can have a three or four story building, but on the side streets, you have a wide idea of different building types um that that create uh a a more graceful response to the context. So instead of having this um which you see R forty, uh you're breaking that box and creating individual elements uh that are responsive to the context. So with that, I will, I will stop and uh I I appreciate the the time and the opportunity to to address uh the council and the planning commission. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you Kaiser for that wonderful presentation. Again, if you'd like to make comments, uh feel free to submit them in the chat box. Um or, you know, raise your hand and we can go ahead and unmute you uh to provide comments.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Thank you, uh Mr. Runguala, for that very thorough presentation. And I wanted to touch on three um areas of interest. Um first, I wanted to ask you about any changes in density. And and I wanted to ask you if you could highlight that for me. And then second, um I guess I wanted to touch on any changes in terms of the design guidelines. Any significant changes, because I I think in the past, that has definitely been a challenge for us. So if you could really highlight that for me, um I would really appreciate that. And then third, for existing uses that are currently permitted, but perhaps being phased out by updates to the specific plan. You know, because maybe there are uses that we don't necessarily wanna encourage today. If somebody came to the city and submitted an application, it's not a use that we would exactly want to encourage. But at the same time, if it's an existing use, my question, my question is, what is your recommendation? And how would we build that into the specific plan for allowing the existing businesses to make improvements to their business so that they don't become obsolete? But at the same time, it allows us to control and regulate you know, those types of uses uh again, because we don't want them to come into our our city at this point in time. It's more about how do we support existing businesses so that they can thrive and they can compete in their industry. Um but you know, at the same time, have ha- consider the the planning aspects of this and what we wanna create in our downtown. So could you, could you address those three items for me?
Sure. M- Mayor, would you like me to do that now or uh but please, please uh let me know?
Yeah, you can go ahead and answer question by question.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um uh excellent questions. Uh and and I'm I'm glad you're you're thinking along those lines, uh because uh all of them have been addressed. Um and and I I wanna make sure that uh if I cannot, um um because of the format um that that we can follow up with you and uh and sit down with you and answer them uh to your satisfaction. But let me, let me just introduce um the concepts. Um in terms of existing users, um the council can set up and the planning commission can set up the dial. If you wanna be very aggressive, uh you can say, you know what, existing users, uh that's fine, no expansion allowed. Um or or you can be more lenient, and as you were suggesting, uh more accommodating and as we have uh because of the direction that we heard from the community, is to allow existing businesses as non-conforming users and allow some moderate amount of expansion, uh so that they can conduct their business. You know, if you have an existing business and they wanna add uh a few square feet here or make some changes, um that's not gonna require them to comply with the new code. Um but if they're adding, for example, more than fifty percent of the value, uh then then I think uh any reasonable uh code uh wants to take a look at it, because the intent is that they're non-conforming, that they ought to be amortized. And by that, I mean whatever investment they are making or have made, they ought to be able to recoup that. But with the understanding that expansion here for this type of use uh is is not something that is conducive for the long term uh viability of of this area. Now, there are some, some uses. And I, Ron, you might point out a few of them. Uh you know, I I don't know, typically boat sales and industrial users and uh uh car lots, um things that um tend not to work in a downtown area. Uh is uh are typically either uh discontinued or allowed with a higher threshold of use such as a specific plan. Um so there might be some uses that were taken off, and here's uh here's a list of uses that we have. Uh and as you can see, P and CUP, so P is permitted, those users are permitted by right. Uh CUP is those users would be required a conditional use permit that would require a higher threshold of use, and they would have to come uh to the planning commission, city council, present their plan of operation, because there are certain things that are associated with the operation that impact that that have that, that have impacts that go beyond the property lines. Um, for example, if you have um, an outdoor car lot, an outdoor car lot has most of its operation outdoors. Uh, and, and uh, if you're thinking about, um, you know, the city is a corporation, the downtown is a corporation, and you as a city council and the planning commission are put in charge of the corporation uh, of, of the downtown, which has what, I don't know, three, four hundred, five hundred million dollars worth of investment, then you're trying to protect the investment uh, that you have within that lot, but also protect the investment around it. Um, so that, um, other parcels that are around it are not impacted in a negative manner, that you can still build, yeah, a, a, whatever the plan calls for across from this lot without having impacts. So those type of uses are, are, are the, that have outdoor component. Um, require either higher threshold of uh, review or are uh, uh, in, in many cases discontinued. Now, in terms of change in density, um, I, 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 I think what, what we have done is, um, uh, we worked with, um, within our team, we had architects and architects who actually build projects. So they're not just urbanists, you know, urban designers, but they're also architects. Um, so what we have done is, uh, rather than work with numbers from your existing specific plan, we work with what makes sense. What would the market build? And uh, how best to tailor that to the different context? Um, so for example, if you're right next to a single family residential neighborhood, uh, a, a, a sixty units per acre density doesn't make sense. Um, so, so in, in many cases, you have that. Um, yeah, so in those cases, we have brought down the density. But if you're on Ramona, uh, where you have a two hundred feet wide uh, threshold, and you're trying to enclose that and create a sense of enclosure, yeah, uh, I think you want to encourage uh, more production there. Um, so the code allows uh, for some leakage. Uh, they're all within the thresholds of, of building types because there are certain building types that you can build. You can build a five story building on uh, four stories or, or a uh, concrete base uh, in type five, I think it's like five construction. But anything beyond that uh, goes into steel, uh, and when they're building steel, they want to go up not five, uh, five to six, but they want to go up eight or nine to recoup the investment they've been seeing. So we've actually taken all of those things into consideration when coming up with density parameters. Context, uh, building types, uh, uh, market preferences, uh, and, and community dialogue. Um, so there are changes to density, and I think you can look at the two maps and the staff will be uh, happy to, you know, we could, we are happy to provide you uh, that, that comparison. Um, um, following this. Um, and then in terms of design guidelines, um, as, as I mentioned earlier, uh, you know, uh, design guidelines are just that, the guidelines, which means I don't have to follow the, the guidelines. Um, and they continue uh, the uh, discretionary review at the planning commission and, and city council. Uh, we like to have standards, uh, very few, very few, very important, uh, and we call them out. Uh, but there are, there are some, some areas where discretion is, is warranted, and I think in those places we have design guidelines. Uh, and, and our organization for the design guidelines is slightly different uh, than, than what you would see uh, in the existing code. We pay a higher preference and a higher uh, degree of uh, uh, importance on the public realm. And that is the design of the street, the design of the open spaces, and the design of the private frontages that define that speed in the open space. Uh, and again, those, those guidelines are, are, are laid out in the document in that format. So, um, it's not apples to apples for us to compare, uh, it's just a different way of, of, uh, of coding. Yeah. I hope I answered your question. If, if there are follow up, please, uh, let me know.
Yes, thank you. Um, as far as the, the density, um, I think it would be helpful to, and I, I understand what you're saying about the context and the building types and compatibility of surrounding uh, uses and properties. Um, but I do want to better understand, and we do have a relatively new council. And so I do want to better understand currently what would be allowed by right? And then what changes are being proposed in this updated specific plan? Um, because I want to understand what a developer can build, you know, at any, in any one of these areas in the downtown area by right or with a discretionary, you know, land use approval. Because, um, that's important to this council, I think, and I think that it would be important to highlight those changes and to make sure that, you know, we do approve the details, the specifics of uh, what's being proposed here. And then, uh, second, as far as uh, the design guidelines, I think it would also be nice to, you know, I think we have actually received some images of what, you know, some of the downtown, um, the designs could look like, but I want to know specifically what is being proposed in this, in this plan. Uh, because again, it has been a challenge in the past and, and I do appreciate all the work that, that you put into uh, being thoughtful on the facades, on the setbacks, um, articulation, all of it. But I think because this is a, a relatively new council, I think it would be nice for all of us to receive that information and to be have, have more detail than less. Um, so Ron, I don't know if there could be a second, you know, meeting, um, to receive that information, that would be helpful. And then my last, my, those were just comments, but my last question, Mr. Rungwala, is what would you recommend? I liked what you said about the moderate improvements uh, for existing non-conforming uses. So what would be the format to, you know, to review, to consider that? What would be your recommendation?
Um, I, 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 I was wondering, uh, have you, have you received, uh, the draft plan? Because a number of things that you're asking for are already called out in the draft plan.
Uh, Ron, did you circulate that?
Yeah, we, we've circulated it out to the community and the council uh, for a little over a month now.
Uh, and I, I can, I can quickly walk you through, uh, so if you have a copy, uh, you can, you can know where to look at uh, these things. Um, uh, for example, the administration section of the plan of the code uh, talks about non-conformity and their standards and uh, it breaks down um, when and how those would kick in and, and another word provision. So let me just quickly uh, point that out to you. I think that would be useful and the density and the design guidelines are all laid out as well uh, for, for different sections. So it's, it's all in the plan.
Kaiser.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, one suggestion, if we could just uh, uh, provide some context, I think would really help and I, I think settle some questions. Uh, uh, Councilmember Garcia's question on, on density. Can you go to your presentation of the, showing the regulating plan? Uh, showing the, um, the difference in, in densities that are being proposed in the downtown?
Uh, sure, I can. Uh, just, uh, if, if you'll give me a moment, I just wanted to, uh, have Garcia look at this section. Uh, one point, two point C, non-conforming lots, uses and structures, intent, uh, and then additions, repairs, maintenance, uh, and then replacement of non-conforming structures. So all of these standards are called out. Again, this is a dial, um, so, so, uh, we can, we can tune it up or, or tune it down. Right now, it's tuned down. Um, uh, to allow uh, this, this to happen gradually over a period of time, not immediately.
Okay, and since we're, since we're having the conversation, um, I see that in this plan, it says no conforming use, no non-conforming uses, uses shall, shall be expanded. And so that's my question is, how do we introduce the opportunity to allow existing non-conforming uses to, where it makes sense to allow them to compete, to thrive in, you know, current market conditions for their industry? Um, and according to this document, I'm seeing that, you know, we're, we're taking a more stringent approach. So I'm asking you, how could we, how could we have that conversation here on the council so we can really talk it through and be thoughtful about it? Because I think, as you pointed out, we have some mom and pop shops or we have some, um, smaller businesses that could use improvement, but they're not able to because of our specific plan because they're not confor- conforming use at this point. So I'm trying to get from you, you know, where, what format would it be to take it, take this section alone and to take it to a, a study session, part two?
Well, I, 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 I think, you know, you, you can, you can give us direction, um, on, on how you want to get, it's a dial. Uh, and, and you need to, I, I would, I would encourage you to read the whole, uh, section. Um, because the very next section talks about additions, if a non-conforming building or structure may be added to provided that addition of fifty percent or more of the floor year existing as of adoption of the downtown code. So you can expand up to fifty percent. Um, now, if you want to change that and allow for a hundred percent expansion, uh, you know, that's uh, it's, it's, it's no longer non-conforming. So you need to have a percentage if you're gonna call it non-conforming. Um, uh, and, and, uh, um, so where and how much you allow expansion um, eh, is, is, and what is reasonable? Because if you allow it hundred percent, then, then you're, you're allowing that use to continue for, for, for perpetuate. Uh, because they can add as they choose and they can stay as non-conformity. Um, if the intent is truly non-conformity, that it ought to go away, that uh, in five years, ten years, they need to look at another location other than downtown, then that is expressly mentioned here. Um, but if, if, for example, there's a use that you feel that belongs in downtown, then maybe we shouldn't make it non-conforming, we should allow it by.
Hmm.
Yeah. Perfect example, some of the you, you know, the uses that were carried over in the use matrix in the existing downtown specific plan, perfect example. Um, uses like auto and, and intense uses, your car washes, um, your drive-throughs, uh, your drive, drive-through uses, um, are prohibited uses. And again, as the Kaiser has mentioned, uh, those uses can be easily, uh, again, they're non-conforming. Um, and that they're prohibited because of it, uh, it being a, a, a T O D, uh, specific plan. But the, it can easily be addressed by, uh, by simply just allowing those uses by right. Um, as, as, uh, Mr. Rungwall has mentioned. So those uses can be dialed down and taken out as prohibited, and then, uh, put in the use matrix as easy as just allowed uh, by a, a C U P, whether it's an expansion of, of less than fifty percent, um, or in, or a further intensification.
Okay, well, thank you for that information. I don't want to take up everybody's time. Um, but I, I do, I do want us to be thoughtful about this, um, as we review the specific plan update and, you know, take the steps to approve. So I just want us to be fully informed, um, and, you know, just to call out certain sections that I think it's timely. I've been part of specific plan updates since two thousand. Um, I've been part of, you know, teams that have created prohibited uses, but where we are now is we do have existing uses and rather than seeing them deteriorate, uh, I would like to see them continue to survive and thrive if possible for a more vibrant downtown area. Um, so that's where I just wanted to call out that section specifically because I think it's one that we really have to be thoughtful about. And I, I thank you, Mr. Rungwala, for mentioning the fifty percent um, because it provides some control uh, on the expansion of it and doesn't necessarily allow the buy right, which, you know, of course, there's a reason why we took the steps to make it prohibited. So anyway, it's a little bit of a conundrum, but you know, um, I'll review that section and then, and then if at a later time, you know, I think it's important for us to have a specific conversation, then I'll bring it up to my council colleagues. Um, as far as like a, a study session phase two perhaps, and perhaps including, you know, the planning commission if they, if they are interested. Thank you.
And one, one more thing to add, thank you, Councilmember Garcia. One thing you mentioned about uses, um, in the downtown. Most of the uses, with the exceptions of the ones that I made note that are, that are indicated in the use matrix as, uh, as prohibited uses. Um, and your car washes, your drive-throughs, um, and your auto-related uses such as, you know, uh, uh, auto mechanic, uh, auto repair, uh, within the downtown. Most of the uses that are, you see in the downtown are being, um, are, are essentially allowed. Um, and what we did, we noticed in the existing specific plan is that, uh, we consolidated, uh, some of the uses, um, made it easier to read and also added uses that, um, we've, uh, and Ben can add, uh, more to that. Uh, uses that we've, uh, that the, the specific plan promotes, like for example, entertainment type uses. We've gotten uses, uh, such as, um, a brew pub. We're a little more specific on the type of alcohol uses, still kept it in line with what's required um, as a, as a, an entitlement, a discretionary entitlement such as a C U P. Um, so it does continue as with the existing plan to support those types of uses that attract, uh, that you would find it in a downtown. And most of all your uses with the ones that I, I noted are being supported in the existing downtown plan. So you're really not gonna see, uh, uh, um, with the adoption of this plan, an automatic, um, uh, automatic non-conforming situation for existing businesses within the downtown. It actually just kind of opens up, uh, for flexibility, um, for those uses to exist uh, in the downtown plan. So hopefully I, I was able to give you a little more context in addition to what, uh, Mr. Rungwall has provided.
So, does any other council member have any questions?
One more item, uh, I wanted to address Kaiser. So Kaiser's put up this slide and Kaiser, you can give some greater detail. Um, but in response to your comment, Councilmember Garcia, um, I'm glad that you asked that question. So the intensity, the existing, um, uh, uh, intensity in the, in the downtown is a maxed out at thirty units per acre. And so when we first came on board, Ben and I were, were getting interest from housing developers uh, wanting to do, uh, interested in developing within the downtown, but the, the density, uh, and Kaiser, you can speak more to that, thirty units per acre just doesn't pencil out um, for a, a downtown, especially when you have a major transit hub, um, such as, uh, MetroLink. And so with this, and as I mentioned earlier on, um, with this S P two grant, um, and then protecting our established, uh, neighborhoods, our single family neighborhoods is to concentrate, uh, and be in line with what the state's been promoting and providing housing uh, near transit and in your downtown. Uh, so what we've done here is evaluated the, the, uh, the densities. And so you can see here in purple, which is the downtown core, um, at a maximum density of sixty units per acre. And then what it does is in, um, moves out to fifty units per acre in the downtown core. Uh, and then, um, in the downtown edge, a maximum of forty units per acre. Kaiser, if you wanted to speak, uh, any, uh, to that, but.
Yeah, I'll just add that, uh, you, you know, this is, um, little bit of bias, uh, we don't believe in density, uh, units per acre. Um, unfortunately, um, the planner side and us, uh, that wants to analyze things um, and, and analyze the impacts actually need those density unit numbers because that's how we generate traffic, that's how we generate uh, impacts, uh, greenhouse gases, et cetera, et cetera. Um, but what, what we are trying to create here is, is, uh, is a form. Um, and we're controlling the form, and I'll give you a good example. Uh, why density uh units per acre doesn't work or, or, or F A R doesn't work. Uh, if I tell you an F A R and I give you an acre lot. Uh, on an acre lot, I can have, I can build on one eighth of the uh of the lot and build the eight-story building. And on the same acre, I can build a one-story building, both are allowed. Uh, density is a very blunt tool. Uh, it's not a great tool for creating communities. So what we try to do is, uh, we try to create the form, we try to address the form by, by calling out the heights that are allowed. For example, in the core that uh Ron was talking about. Uh, we're allowing buildings to go up to fifty-five feet, uh, provided there is. Um, buildings to go up to forty-five feet with an addition. Um, of, of an additional story if they take that much of the story out from the back. Where it meets the uh residential context, where it meets the uh local residential streets. Um, so we're talking in terms of shaping that form with setbacks with height. Uh, rather than the blunt tool units per acre. So what you have here in this plan is a combination, we've used both. Uh, we've used units per acre, but also tempered it uh with heights and setback. Uh, to get the final form and, and with frontages.
So with a fifty-five foot. Limit on, in some of these areas, are we looking at five stories? Like a five-story building?
Yes, a five-story building uh with uh, actually, let, let me, let me, let me describe it this way. Uh, in, in the purple, you can have four-story buildings. But that four-story building can have a five-story element. Along Ramona, for example, or along Main, provided that take comparable amount of space away from the back. Where it meets neighborhood and, and this diagram explains that, so you can add. In, in additional story to go up to five, provided the story in the back is no longer four, but it's three. Uh, where it meets the ne- neighborhood, so as to create that contextual density we're talking about, so as to not perpetuate the block building. Uh, that, that we often see, so that's, that's the core. Then aside from the core, the orange, as, as uh Ron was suggesting, you can build up to three stories. Thirty-five feet, so along the corridor, you can build three-story buildings. Uh, with a four-story element, so along if I'm building, say for example, on this parcel. Uh, along Ramona on the north side, um, then that's colored orange. Then I can build a four-story building along Ramona and my building needs to step back. Uh, comparable amount uh in, in, uh, in a, in a, in uh. In two, uh, sorry, in um. In, in two stories in the back. Uh, and then going back to the yellow uh in the downtown edge. Uh, I can build up to uh two stories, twenty-five feet, uh, with the provision to go up to thirty-five uh feet. Uh, as, as you meet the residential context and which is what is allowed uh in residential history. So it's, it's a gradation, uh, and it's a little more uh skillful and a little more. Um, uh, articulate way of crafting building masses for different context. Uh, rather than saying units per acre, uh, go at it, you, you often get block buildings.
Yeah, I get it and I appreciate that you're incorporating like that transitional, that transitional. Um, you know, height, I guess, is what, how I would describe it, right? Because you're trying to. Um, match the context of the surrounding properties, uses, neighborhood. My question to the council and to the commit, to the planning commission is, what do you think about five-story buildings in downtown? And that's why I, you know, I wanted to ask about these specifics because now is the time to have a conversation around these.
Yeah, and I, I kind of want to chime in, so I'm, I'm glad Councilmember Garcia brought up this point, right? And so I was, my, my question was going to be regarding density and something you mentioned was. You said something along lines of market-friendly density and to me, that's kind of saying, that's kind of density that, that the, that the. That the developers are going to want, and so. In my opinion, what the develop, the density the developers are going to want is going to be much more dense than what the community is going to want. And so I guess before I continue, I did want to ask. Uh, what, what type of outreach did you do to the community and how many people were you able to speak to?
Um, I, I, oh, I, um. We, we did a series of steps for outreach, um, starting with interviews. Um, of stakeholders and we, uh, these, these are stakeholders that staff identified as key players within the downtown, within the community. Um, and I think it was about dozen or, or, or maybe even fifteen. Um, stakeholders that we, that we interviewed uh one-on-one. Uh, in addition to that, uh, we've had, as I mentioned, uh, uh, over nine meetings, uh, over nine-month period. Um, the, which includes a three-day charrette where we work with the community for three continuous days. Uh, and met with them at six different meetings. Um, so, uh, I would say most of those meetings were, I, I don't have the. Uh, accurate log of uh how many people attended those meetings, Mayor, but I would say we, we had, we had a good, healthy dialogue. Um, uh, with, with the people that attended uh those meetings. Ron, you may want to add.
Yeah.
Uh, additional outreach efforts that, uh, in terms of notification and, uh, reaching out to property owners and businesses.
Hmm.
That, that you engaged in.
Yeah, thank you Kaiser, Mr. Mayor, so, um, great question, so we, ahead of time, when we first uh, uh, kicked off this endeavor. Um, we knew that outreach was going to be really important. Uh, we also understood walking into this plan that historically, you know, the, you know, the Baldwin Park community. Really low turnout, uh, you can talk to several of our staff members. That have, uh, done other projects not related to planning, but you know, for example, public works. Um, but we didn't let that sway us, we, um, we were also dealing with the pandemic at the same time. Um, but, uh, we did an extensive outreach. Uh, staff and I, uh, planning staff, myself and the associate planner mailed out more than a thousand six hundred notices. Uh, letting them know of the stakeholder meetings, letting them know of the community charrette meetings. We also heavily, heavily advertised on the city's website and also uh social media. Uh, Instagram, Twitter, um, uh, and all that could, all that. Uh, was done thankfully, uh, with the help from Helen in our Parks and Rec Department. Um, we also invited key stakeholders as Kaiser mentioned, you know, our. Uh, uh, our, um, business, uh, community. Um, uh, also community groups, uh, we try to get a hold of community groups, the school district. Um, uh, and so we, we did. I think in, in my opinion, I think if it wasn't for COVID, we probably would have had a lower turnout. Uh, but because of COVID, it, it allowed people to, the flexibility of, of logging on through a Zoom uh. Uh, community meeting, uh, we did average, um, you know, uh, between twenty to twenty-five participants. Um, and, uh, but to answer your question in, in, in its entirety. We did do a, uh, an extensive, extent amount of, uh, of outreach. Perfect example, uh, in preparation for the release of this draft document. Uh, all those, all those resources were used, social media, Twitter, Instagram, uh, our website. And then sending out a thousand plus notices, uh, uh, well over a month uh in advance in preparation for this meeting. Uh, between that time period of releasing the document, I did get. Uh. Uh, less than five uh calls, uh, asking about the downtown specific plan. Um, but that was pretty much it, so in, in its entirety, we did do an extensive amount of research, I mean, not research, but uh. Uh, of outreach.
Yeah, and then so, and then you also reached out to community members that aren't in the downtown area, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Right, because so the downtown area, it's not just, so to me, the downtown area belongs to everybody, right? Everybody wants the downtown area to thrive and I think that regardless, we talked to the ballpark community. We all want to be able to enjoy the downtown area, right? So that we can spend our dollars here, we can enjoy our city and we don't have to travel too far. Um, so the, I think the, the biggest concern of mine is the density portion, right? I think. Um, you know, we, we talked about how high our, our, our buildings are, 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 you know, are, we're allowing them to get. And I know that when the Caesar Chavez Foundation talked about their affordable housing, uh, they ended up agreeing to reducing a, a level because we thought it was too high. Right, and, and I think that's not just my, one of my concerns, but I think that's a concern for a lot of the community, right? We're, we're a pretty, uh. Unique town and our downtown is, is very specific to us. And so I, my, one of the basics is that once we start building up, you know, we're creating this, this, this major density. And it kind of takes away from what Baldwin Park is. And, and I think that there's ways where we can create a downtown that's usable, walkable. And that has a, a right amount of density so that it thrives and that there's a good uh circulation in that, in that area.
Yeah, so good point, our, the existing uh specific plan allows a building height. Uh, the, for example, the Caesar Chavez Foundation project. They built that project under the existing conditions of the current uh specific plan. Uh, at a maximum height of fifty feet. Um, it doesn't provide that contextual, uh, uh. Uh, articulation, as Kaiser has mentioned, where you have, uh, your higher, your, your higher stories. Um, and then it cuts back out, especially when you transition to single-family. Um, the current uh specific plan is fifty feet, thirty units per acre. The one thing that I want to make a note and I'm glad that Councilmember Garcia may note of it, I want to circle back to that because this is all interrelated is. The buy right, uh, one thing about the Caesar Chavez Foundation is. Um, and this is state law, uh, there's no way working around state law. Uh, but, uh, if you all recall the, uh, project for the, uh, Senior Housing Foundation. They could check off all those boxes per state law. Uh, and the density that they were requesting because they're near transit. Allows them by right, uh, without a discretionary approval, so the planning commission can't see it, the city council can't see it. Uh, for a vote, um, and that, and, and, and that scenario. I think in good faith effort, um, they worked with the city, they wanted to present to the city what they were proposing. But for example, Caesar Chavez. Um, uh, that is most likely going to be a buy right based on state law and then meeting the density. Uh, that allows them, uh, to move forward with a non-discretionary. Um, approval, they can simply walk into the city hall, submit to the building department. Uh, we cannot require parking, that's the other thing too. State law does prohibit cities from requiring additional parking, especially because it's near transit. Uh, this plan, if it's not, if, if it's not a project that's related to a hundred percent affordable. Um, does allow for discretionary review, does allow for, uh, planning commission, uh, uh, review. Uh, and then to take it a step further, uh, with the adoption of this plan. Um, what this plan does is it makes a recommendation for the city to move forward with. Uh, request, uh, requesting for service for architectural. Uh, consulting services to assist the city and city staff to review projects. Uh, that come through the downtown to make sure that we're getting quality architecture, quality design in line with. Um, what the plan is, is promoting. And Kaiser, you could speak a little more to that, but, um.
I just want to provide it out here, maybe, maybe I confuse the issue because I, I want to make sure that everybody understands. That the purple area is where four-story buildings are allowed. And the fifth story is just an element, which means that a small portion of that building, not the entire building. So when you say a fifth, five-story building, nah, we're not talking about that. We're actually talking about a fifth-story element, provided a similar element is taken down from the back to provide a contextual mass. And that's only happening on four corners of your downtown. Everywhere else, you're seeing a declension, you're seeing a three-story building. And even lower than that, two stories as it goes back, which is lower than the highest tallest building that you have currently in the downtown, which is a four-story. Building, so we are actually bringing down the density, we're very much aware. Uh, that, that, you know, this, this needs to be uniquely Baldwin Park and. Uh, you know, we understand your concern about density and the impacts of the density, but there are also positive impacts. Um, that, that, uh, uh, density allows you to, to address. Uh, and by the way, uh, if traffic is your concern, you can do nothing and traffic will get worse. I can, I can almost guarantee that because the neighboring cities are building. And, and your streets are not blocked at the boundaries, uh, this is true traffic, so your traffic will get worse. It's, uh, uh, how are you using these projects to make a bad situation from getting worse and improving it? And that's what, uh, the density allows you to do is to create a mixed-use environment that doesn't. Primarily rely on the automobile, it's transit-oriented, uh, it provides the housing unit that you have a legal obligation. Not a moral, a legal obligation, you have to provide those two thousand units. If not here, find somewhere else in your town, in, in your city. Uh, so that, that, that is something that you need to keep in mind when, when, uh. Uh, you, you scored away from, from the term density because it's, it's, it's required. Um, and in addition to that, your property and sales tax, if you're generating, uh, you, you're making retail and transit both viable. Uh, by providing, so it's a very limited area that we're talking about a five-story element. For the most part, your downtown is going to be two and three stories.
Yeah, so the way we map. Sorry, so the way we map downtown here, it looks pretty big, but I think for the most of us, downtown really ends at the corner of Baldwin Park Boulevard. And at most at the corner of the MetroLink. And then everything else beha, be, beyond that is, is, is really residential, right? And I know that we have to build housing, of course we do by law. Um, you know, but I, I think we, and we just, we've just had this discussion, right? Where, you know, Baldwin Park hasn't really seen a lot of stuff and then to go and. Take the finite amount of space that we have for the downtown area and, and densify it with housing. You know, it, it's, to me, it's, it's not something that I, I'm the most, uh, in support of. Um, I know that we have to build housing and I, and I think that we have to get creative with that, right? Instead of just loosening the density of what developers are going to be able to build in here. You know, I, I, I think that is, I think that is, I know residents aren't always the most proactive and, and don't get involved in the meetings. Even if we invite them to, but I know that that is a concern that, that they do, uh, that they, they do feel strongly about, right? And so, um, another one is, you know, we talked about. We, I think you mentioned, you know, building housing is going to help our, you know, kind of fight off the homeless and. And housing issues, but you know, if we're building densified housing in a downtown area by the MetroLink, what's it going to come out to? And are, and are we considering, you know, the, the demographics and median incomes of our families here in the city?
Yes and yes.
A couple of questions, Mayor.
Uh, yes, Councilmember Damian.
Uh, so for the outreach, Ron, who's in charge of doing the outreach? Is it, uh, Mr. Rongwalla or is it city staff?
Oh, no, it's in partnership with the, with the, with the consultant, but. Uh, ninety, ninety-nine percent is, is city staff.
Got it, and, and so it's according to, to what I'm seeing here is you have the, um. You have the downtown core, the corridor and the edge, so are you, is this plan proposing that we build two thousand sixty-two units within this downtown area?
So based on, so there's a couple of things, so based on the, uh, the intensity of the downtown plan. And what, what has been, uh, um, looked at. Has the intensity to build a, a little over, um, uh. What the state is requiring us to, um, to accommodate of a thousand nine hundred and ninety-six units.
So. Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So within this downtown area. Uh, uh, has the potential for, for two thousand plus units, yes.
So we're, I mean, we have a leakage in restaurants, clothing. Um, we have a leakage in specialty home furnishings and all of that. We really don't have a walkable downtown where we can say, let's go and spend, you know, sales tax dollars in downtown. And so basically what we're proposing is that we bring in and, and satisfy those one thousand nine hundred and ninety-six units that are required to be built. By twenty twenty-nine in the downtown quarter?
Well, one of the, so this is a Kaiser, uh, if you can speak to that, but this is a long-term, so this is a specific plan as Kaiser mentioned. This is thirty, forty, fifty years out. One re, the requirement that we have, uh, by state law is that we have to plan for the accommodation. Of a thousand nine hundred and ninety-six units. Um, and so by moving forward with this plan. Uh, allows us to comply with those number of units required by the state. And again, when we first, uh, took this endeavor. And looking at the downtown and then also looking at the existing downtown specific plan at a maximum of thirty units. And looking at the downtown and also looking at the existing downtown specific plan at a maximum of thirty units per acre. Um uh and in line with what the state is supporting and building housing near transit. Especially because Baldwin Park does have a MetroLink station, is you want to build near transit, you want to put your housing near transit. Uh by building this housing does not remove uh the ability to be able to attract your restaurants, your retail uses. Because it is mixed use, you you do allow for uh ground floor uh uh retail uses. So that doesn't go away. Um uh, you know, walkability, uh perfect example. What you see out there under construction right now and and the public works director can speak uh more to it. Is uh the downtown beautification, that is all a contributor towards the main goal of 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 creating a walkable downtown. Um so hopefully I've been able, uh hopefully I was able to answer your question. And Kaiser, if you want to.
So. So a mixed use, I mean, a mixed use in downtown, I I'm not opposed to that. But have we explored building and satisfying the one thousand nine hundred ninety six units that we have to build? In other parts of the city instead of just in downtown? I mean, because. That's a lot of units for downtown. I I mean, where where's parking going to be?
Ron, uh, can I, can I address that, please?
Sure, go ahead.
Um I I I understand your concern uh and I'm I'm with you hundred percent. Um I I I don't think it's intend that all of that uh capacity be met in the downtown area. Um and what uh the state is looking for is to. Uh for for the city not to build, because you're not in the bu- uh building business, you're not in uh building the. Uh um you know, you you're a city government, you're not a developer. Uh but what the city wants, what the state wants to do is, they want to see a document, they want to see a plan, they want to see a code. That would allow a capacity uh for that to be built. Now, uh what's interesting about this downtown is you're incredibly rich in the fabric. Um where you have small lots, large lots, multiple ownership. Um the plan that we are sharing with you today has a maximum build out of two thousand units. And that's over maybe even twenty years, perhaps fifty years, maybe not in our lifetime. Um it's going to be built incrementally, it's not going to be built overnight. Uh and I I haven't run the numbers we can, but uh it's only a small percentage over what's currently allowed. You are, your your current specific plan also allows uh units. And in this case, I think we are, we've just kind of tweaked it in some places to create more contextual mass and and uh. And um allowed for uh some places to be. Uh higher because they are more intense corners of your downtown. Uh where we hope transit retail uh will 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 function uh better. Um but all of the units that we're talking about, the two thousand units, they're going to be built over a period of fifty to hundred years. Um what the state is requiring is for you to show in your code the ability to build. Two thousand units. Not all of them are in downtown. Your housing consultant in a couple of weeks is going to share. How many of those can be projected to be in the downtown? Um area and how many could be elsewhere in the city. The housing element is going to show you that. Um so yes, but it it but I would I would venture to say. Uh they're gonna, they're gonna come back and see a good portion of that is going to be in the downtown because that's where your parcels are the largest. That's where your opportunities are the largest. But they're also going to look at other corridors, they're going to look at sites. Uh along the along the freeway. Uh when you, when you look at the city as a whole. Uh there aren't that many areas or where you can uh uh you can locate uh high density housing. Um um yeah, uh and and I think uh the the location where you want to locate it is. Where you have transit, where you have some of your amenities, where you have your infrastructure, uh and that happens to be in the downtown. So. I wouldn't be surprised if the housing element comes back and says, you know, a good portion of these uh are are going to be in the downtown, but they're going to look at the entire city. And the distribution would be citywide of those two thousand units in the next eight years. So there are two different things happening. Two thousand units as recommended by the uh by the state, which you have to provide, which is going to be citywide. And then two thousand units capacity that is projected in your downtown specific plan. That can occur over a period of twenty to fifteen years. Um and and it's going to be that way because you have multiple ownership. None of these people are are selling their parcels and and uh um and 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 uh rebuilding. Uh downtown any time, any anytime soon. Uh you have two or three opportunities in your downtown area that's going to materialize in the next five to eight years. Uh and and I think that will help your housing element. Uh but other than that, all of the other sites, uh it's going to take a long, long time.
Yeah, thank you for that Kaiser. Um just you you are correct. Um and as I I mentioned earlier on the book. We are going to have a joint study session on the housing element document and Kaiser is correct. Uh that most of the units uh to meet their state's arena uh is within the downtown. If some of those units get shaved off in the downtown, the reality is that we're prob- we're most likely going to have to start from score one. Uh to evaluate um and consider other areas of the city for rezone and density and to densify. Other areas. Uh and again, as I mentioned earlier on with the the approach of the downtowns. Uh this downtown specific plan is the protection. Um of of your established neighborhoods, especially because it's lar- largely made up of single family residential. Um not sure if you uh want to also just kind of shed light, I've had this conversation with uh some of the council members. Is uh, you know, the state passed uh uh ADU law. Uh and essentially you can have three units on any single family lot. Um you can convert uh part of your single family home into a junior accessory dwelling unit. Uh along with the existing dwelling unit, primary unit, and then build a either attached or a detached ADU. And that's all, that's state law. And um so we we've definitely seen an increase uh there. But to to make an effort in protecting the established neighborhoods. Uh the uh the intent, the uh uh planning to uh for growth within the downtown make much more sense. Uh um than than considering intensifying our established neighborhoods.
So in a sense, you don't have to build these two thousand units in downtown, you just have to send this plan to Rena. To let them know that we have the capability of building these two thousand plus units in our downtown area. Having in our plan to satisfy their requirement.
You're absolutely one hundred percent correct.
And so, and so if we were to adopt this plan, can any modifications be made at a later time?
The answer is yes. Um but. Once we've identified the sites, uh once we've identified those sites for development, uh the state makes note of it. We will have to keep an inventory. Um so for example, if we make modifications, say, well, we don't want, uh for example. Uh development to occur on this site, state law requires, state law requires us to find another site. Uh that we are to distribute, redistribute uh those units elsewhere in the city. So uh it is going to require uh a a uh a different exercise to do that, but yes, you are correct.
So then all of these sites that are in this downtown specific plan have already been identified. For proposed development of housing. And if at any point in time we decide we don't want housing in that specific parcel. Then we have to send it to s- to the state and let them know that we made a modification and we would have had to find. A separate parcel for them to be able to build those units that we're going to build initially, correct?
Can I, can I answer that, Ron?
Sure, go ahead Kaiser.
Uh Council, Damian, you you you're correct. Uh I would I would add a point of clarification. That not all of the sites are uh allocated for growth. Uh we we selected the sites based on feedback that we received from the community. Uh during our meetings and the sites that were identified by staff and. Uh various elected members of the planning commissioners. Uh so those are the sites that are identified for. Uh redevelopment potential. These are vacant sites, these are sites that potentially may be underutilized. Or these are sites where developers, individual property owners have expressed interest. Uh to to uh build in the near future. Um so not all of the sites are identified. Only select number of sites have been identified as potential for uh for redevelopment.
And the selected, the sites that you've selected for possible development of housing are included in this downtown uh one hundred forty five page report?
Uh yes, sir.
I can review that, okay.
Yeah.
But I also want to add clarification uh so that uh you know, you you get the whole picture. I'm sorry, Ron, I didn't mean to speak over you. Um um while 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 what I said is true, uh that doesn't mean that. Uh any of the parcels that were not identified cannot come forth with a development proposal. They have every right uh to to come forth and and build for for what the code uh would allow them. Um so we have only selected a handful of sites that we know are potentials. But when we code uh and we prepare a plan, uh the code is for the entire downtown area. Uh so for example, where you're seeing some of the apartment buildings uh north of Morgan Park, we're not proposing any changes. Uh we're actually maintaining status quo. What is there can remain. But they have every right, just as other parcels, uh to come up for redevelopment. Um but the capacity there, the density there is exactly what they have currently. We're not changing that. It's two or three stories. In that case, it can be two stories uh as is. Uh so for most of your downtown, the density is going to remain as is. There are only select parcels that we've identified uh in the downtown area uh for 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 redevelopment. Um but other parcels can come forth, uh and I want to make that clarification.
Yeah, Kaiser, thank you for making that clarification. So some of those parcels, for example, just to give a little more detail. The 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 slide that you showed with the white uh buildings identified. So those those sites uh in working with the consultant, um we went over what's in the pipeline, what's uh what's inch of interest in the downtown. You know, for example, uh the Retirement Housing Foundation across the street from the MetroLink, that that was identified. You can see that. There on on Central. So we identified that, that's that's coming, that's happening. Um and then the other um that we had a stud, the council had a study session was it, which is the Caesar Chavez. Um that is more likely to, that's going to turn over because uh the the interest is there. Um and they they control the site. The other location is the the Water District Building. Um uh that is another potential site um that was identified. Um for likely to turn over in the in the near future. Um. Uh the other site, for example, Rome across the street from City Hall. Um uh that site, uh because we've had extensive discussions, we've been working with Rome for quite a while and based on what their plan. Is proposed, so we identified that in the plan to differentiate what is coming in the near future and then long term. So hopefully that that provides a little more clarity.
So, I just wanted to add, so I know that even if we adopt this plan, it doesn't mean that it's going to happen. But then we're talking about, so let's say at the Park Plaza, let's say uh. The current owner and property manager want to add a building that's commercial, but that's not what's intended in the downtown plan, we're planning for heavy density housing there.
No, they they can propose Kaiser uh.
Uh I'm I'm so glad you asked that, Mayor. Uh thank you for that question because it allows us an opportunity to clarify an additional point. Um what you see here in the plan, uh this rendering, it's an illustrative plan. It's one of hundreds of possible outcomes uh that we are suggesting. The document that I think we need to focus on is a legal document, that's the regulating plan, uh and that's this document. So this document actually controls what gets built where. Um so for example, if this guy wants to come in. Um Park Plaza and rebuild, what can he rebuild? Well, uh he can rebuild housing at uh a much lower density. Uh kind of the density that you already have in the neighborhood for about uh more than half his parcel. He has to put a public open space and then for a quarter lot here, he can build uh that four story building. Uh with a fifth story and third story element as we had described earlier. And then on on the rest of the parcel. Uh he can build a corridor building that would be essentially a a three story building with a two story element. Uh and and a four story element along the along with a border.
So if you can, if you can imagine one uh the corner of, you know, the Bank of America building, right on the corner. So let's say that were to get uh uh redeveloped, potentially Bank of America could be on the ground floor. Uh and you can have uh, you can have uh office space residential units above. Uh as a mixed use building uh at that corner uh within that shopping center.
And then, so how does this affect, so if we allow for this much density, you know, and then a and a developer comes in. And then we don't agree with it, then at that point, I don't think we have much say, right? Because we've allowed for it in the downtown specific plan.
Well, Kaiser, if you want. So um so there is a discretionary approval. Again, as I mentioned, there's, it's really important, there's two distinctions. Not to mix them up is when you have a hundred percent affordable because of state density bonus laws. Uh when you're close to transit, and that's what's unique about the downtown in Baldwin Park, is if they're able to uh check all those boxes. Uh it ha- we have to allow it by right. Uh but for example, if you get a uh market rate housing developer to come in. Uh there is some discretion there because it is going to require discretionary approval uh based on. Uh a lot of the item of the the uh design considerations that Kaiser was discussing. Uh and based on the intensity, uh there is going to be some some uh discretionary review.
Mayor, I have a question um follow up to that. So Ron, just to be more specific. You mentioned Bank of America, the corner. And I, if I'm looking at this correctly, is it in the purple zone?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
That is correct, yeah.
So in the purple zone, a developer could come in and propose a project that is up to fifty five. Feet with a certain percentage of that as a not a a floor, but. Um excessive space, I guess, or excess space. And could be, the project could be up to sixty units per acre in that site. And would that be by right? Or would that be just, would that require discretionary review?
No, that would require discretionary review by uh by the planning commission, uh unless appealed uh to the city council. Um and with that, requires a review uh uh a again, as I mentioned. Moving past this plan is to then do an RFP for uh in a town planner to assist staff. In review of projects within the downtown to make sure that we're getting quality architecture, quality design. In conformance with the downtown specific plan.
So what what would be the discretionary um review exactly for that? Let's say, uh under in that scenario.
Kaiser, did you want to mention, uh I'm sorry if I interrupted you.
I I was just going to add a couple of things. One, um I I I think if you want to build a portion of that. It would start with the subdivision process. Um because right now, that parcel. Uh and I I've had to take a look at the geometry of that parcel, but I think that parcel is. Um Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is, this is the parcel. It's an outlot within a larger shopping center. Um so if you're just developing this parcel. Um then you need to show how the rest of the of that of that development is going to function, because right now it's all connected. Um right, so we have suggested in the plan, a one possible outcome. If you want to change that, fine, there's a process, come come and change it. But you need to show how. That fits within the larger parcel, we're within the larger uh uh setting. Uh so that when you're building the bank building, you show in the subdivision where the rest of the parcels are. Because you're reconfiguring how this site functions. This site functions as a shopping center, the parking is shared, the driving is. I'm sorry?
Oh, go ahead Kaiser, there was a bit of some feedback.
Okay, um um so so that that needs to happen. Now. Okay, um um so so that that needs to happen. Now, we've heard, uh and I think. This would be very helpful direction to us. You've heard um a lot of talk about excessive density. Um and and the not being appropriate. Uh I I I think it'd be helpful for us because we've worked with the community and worked. Uh with many members uh who have participated in this open participatory process for the last nine months. Uh and and at every step, we brought this for your for your review, for your recognition. And we received directions saying, yeah, that's fine, go ahead. Uh but tonight, we're hearing some pushback on the density. So I think those that are pushing back, if they can provide a direction to us, what is acceptable density? Um what is concerned? Is a concern the fifth story element? Because we can take that away. We can allow a four-story element. Uh is this, is a concern the fourth story element? Or would you like to see everything in the downtown be just three stories? Give us some specific direction so we can make this edit and bring you the final plan, because that would be helpful. Um uh conclusion of this evening's meeting, uh to have some direction from the council, from the entire council. Um yeah, about what you would like to see in this downtown plan.
Well, I would, I would suggest that we have a second um meeting. First of all, to your point, we wanna have the entire council present, and of course, the Planning Commission, if they wanna um take the time. I think it would be appropriate, but you know, I know that eh we wanna be respectful of people's time. But um I would, I would certainly, that would be my my recommendation, is to have a second. Phase of this meeting so that we're all present and we're getting the specifics. I think what we have received to this point is a higher level um presentation, and I think we have had. We, there has been alignment. I think that where we wanna be very thoughtful. And you have clearly been very thoughtful, Kaiser, and so have you, Ron. But I think as far as the City Council and the Planning Commission, we wanna be very thoughtful and have a conversation. Around, you know, what makes sense for us and then develop consensus um there. And like, for example, you know, um I guess, I don't wanna be labor, but my my. I guess my question on the Bank of America scenario is, let's say, those four parcels at the corner were combined. And by a developer who is proposing a mixed-use project. And they were looking at a four-story um, you know, condominium. With, I guess, up to sixty units per acre and then a commercial on the bottom. So what discretionary actions would be required? Uh if we were to move forward with what is being proposed tonight, what would the discretionary actions be? From the Planning Commission and the City Council? If a project was proposed like that, would it be? Um what would it, what would that be exactly? C U P E or?
It it would be, uh it it would certainly, as 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 Ron was mentioning, uh it would be a site plan application. And it would be reviewed for uh design and spatial uh cons- uh concerns by a town architect. So you have an architect reviewing another architect's work and providing feedback, um because they have the right skill sets. Um and and then those comments would appear before Planning Commission uh through a site plan review. Uh and uh you uh I I would imagine uh you will proceed to the council uh for their, for their review and approval. So that discretionary review is still there. It's not a C U P. The C U P is related to a use. Uh conditional use. In this case, the bank use uh council member uh would be an allowed use, so it would not trigger a C U P. But if you wanted to put a car lot there, uh then that might trigger a C U P.
So then what I, so what I'm hearing then is that it's basically a design review. And a site plan review, and that's those, that's a discretionary action. So, you know, I'm very much in favor of of having housing and I'm in favor of having, you know. Some some density in our downtown. Um I'm comfortable with a three-story, still based on. What existing structures and um, you know, I don't wanna come across as being anti-development in any way. I have, I have definitely, um you know, worked, I've worked for a developer and I've. Um been very friendly to the development community as a planning commissioner and a council member. So I don't wanna come across as being anti-development or anti-density or anti-housing in the downtown area. I believe in mixed uses. Um that are, that all create a synergy, that create a walkable downtown. Um but for me, I think I would feel comfortable creating a baseline of. Like a three-story structure, um and then allowing for discretionary beyond that. So creating a range uh of of like a baseline and then what could be allowed with the discretionary. Uh action and review. This way, it's just a little bit more in uh the City Council and the Planning Commission's control as to what is actually created. Um so that that's my comment, that that's my, um those are my recommendations. And I would recommend that we have a a second study session to this because I wanna also mention to my colleagues on the council. That this document, the specific plan, it it's usually updated every five, you know, ten years. Uh between five and ten years, and it's, it is basically like a roadmap. For what is allowed in our downtown area. So if we do move to approve this document. We really wanna make sure that we're comfortable with every, all the details. And um speaking of that, Ron, I looked through my emails and I I don't have the documents, so can you resend it to me, please? So that I can, yeah, and maybe what we can do too is um for the second meeting, the follow-up meeting. Uh we can re-circulate that to everybody just so that it's fresh. You know, it's it's at everybody's fingertips. But that would, those would be, that would be my recommendation.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Just to go back on your discretionary comment. Um so the discretionary action is not gonna be any different from the way that um projects get reviewed and approved. Uh now, uh the only added, the 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 really um um. Nice thing about this plan is uh involving a a a a town uh designer to assist staff. In reviewing uh the the architecture and site plan, as Kaiser mentioned, as part of that review process. Um internally, prior to moving forward to sending it to the Planning Commission for their final review and approval, because. Uh we do have to obviously uh uh have environmental review that has to get certified by. The the approving body, that being the Planning Commission. Um and if the project, and it allows the Planning Commission to give their uh. Their their comments on the pro- on on the project, and if for some reason it does get denied. Uh the developer has the ability to appeal that to council for further review. But the the eh the discretionary process, not anything different from how we're uh uh. Uh processing projects uh at the moment. So we're not changing any of that. Uh the discretionary there is that it requires, one as mench- uh mentioned uh by Kaiser, is a uh subdivision. So uh subdivision does require a discretionary action approved by the Planning Commission for their approval. Uh we just took two housing projects to the Planning Commission for approval the other uh couple of weeks ago. Uh it'll move forward in that same uh that same process.
I I would agree with you, Ron, that the process doesn't change, but based on the project. The request, the application does. So let me give you an example. If somebody, if a developer comes in today uh proposing a market rate project. Uh based on the specific plan as it stands, allows for thirty units per acre. But if, let's say, they were, they were requesting um fifty units per acre. Would that change what the the application and and what they're specifically requesting in order to develop that project?
No, so the existing specific plan, they can't go over the thirty units per acre unless, unless. Uh and it would still require discretionary approval. Uh the um it's not allowed by right. Uh but they have to comply with the specific plan at at thirty units per acre. They couldn't come in and say, we wanna do more than. Uh what's allowed in the specific plan. That right there requires a uh uh specific plan amendment. To increase the density allowed within the specific plan, which is what we're doing in this specific plan, is recommending to um. To the higher density, but no, no developer would be able to come in uh. Uh and propose a higher density than what's allowed in the specific plan.
Okay, so that answers the question then, because if a developer comes in saying, I wanna develop thirty units, then that's allowed. And you know, they would go through the process. If a developer today were to come in and say, I wanna develop forty units, that's not allowed. Why? Because the city has has basically said, we don't allow that. That's my point. You know, that's my point, so.
Yeah, so in the existing specific plan, for example, we're calling out in the core sixty uh sixty units per acre. Uh they would not be able to come in and propose seventy. Uh they would have to be within the the density allowed. Um to propose an application unless they submitted a specific plan amendment. Um again, because uh applicants do have that right to submit an application, whether the council or planning commission would be in favor of it or not. Or staff uh recommend uh um that the city not move forward with an increase in density.
Um and that's what, that's what we're talking about here, is do we wanna increase it by the du- double the density, right? Thirty units as it stands today to sixty units as it's proposed in the in the update of the specific plan. And so that is important for us to consider and to talk about, and even perhaps to look at projects that. Um would have, like, let's say, forty units per acre. What does that kind of project look like versus sixty? What does that kind of project look like?
Yeah.
Uh I think that would help, you know, again, just to to facilitate a a thoughtful conversation um on the council. With the three of us, but in it, you know, with our, the colleagues who are not present today, and the Planning Commission as well.
Yeah, and just a reminder, we um we went thoroughly uh in our our charrette of what those building types look like. Um of what uh you know, fifty units, what a fifty unit per acre, what a fifty unit density. Building would look like, sixty units. Um and uh we we did do that, so I I just wanna be clear that we did present those. Those types uh during the charrette in order to 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 get um um. A direction to move forward uh with the the creation of this document.
Yes, and I I do remember that that was presented, um but as part of. You know, we 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 went from a higher level conversation, oh, this is what this looks like, oh, this is what this could be. Now we're narrowing it down. Now we're creating more parameters within our specific plan. And so, you know, it doesn't hurt if we're gonna be having the conversation. To include what the visuals could be. And I do remember that Kaiser did a great job of showing, you know, um. Density and how it can be masked and uh how it can be presented in a way where it's not, you know, a mass. It's not a rectangular box. Um but now that we're talking specifics. You know, it'd be nice to say, oh, this is an example of what that could look like. Um I I don't know, do my council colleagues disagree? Um I'm just trying to, you know, trying to. Like match the details of the specific plan with some visuals to to help facilitate, so. Again, those are just recommendations.
Can I add a point of clarification, just uh uh because I think it's important to understand uh this final detail. Uh we're not calling out densities, it's just used for calculating impacts. If you see the regulating plan, it's suggesting districts. And if you see the downtown core and the standards, it's suggesting height, building height. Um but for the calculation purposes, we have been to do density parameters. Um so a a density of sixty units per acre, fifty units per acre, you ask an average person, saying, how how tall is that? Well, it ranges, it depends. Uh and that's the true answer. It can be five stories, it can be two stories. Uh if you if you pack the um the ground or two or three stories, if you pack it uh all the way uh through. So what we are trying to get at is the building form, which is what people see, that the visual impact of a density is a height. Uh that people see. Um and and that's what we are regulating. Um and we have included sections. Uh as well as diagrams um that that demonstrate what what that building could potentially look like. Now, if if you have concerns with the final heights, we can moderate that. Um give us some direction there. Uh if uh from from what I'm hearing, uh you said you're comfortable with three stories. Um and and that's uh what you would like to see in the downtown. I think that's good direction. Uh for us, because that tells us where to pin this. Density numbers don't mean a whole lot, because they could, they could vary again, how you use your site. Um so I'm I'm trying to get some clarification on how to craft this code, so it meets your intent, it meets your vision, it meets your direction.
Yeah, and I I I think I agree. I think three stories is a reasonable amount, especially for our city. I think it, I think it's a good start, kinda go from there. Um and I think, you know, I think that. The the pictures that that we're seeing of what downtown could be, I think are great. I like the idea of trees everywhere and the shade and, you know, it helps. It's gonna help fight off uh urban heat island effect. And and it makes it walkable, right? It's gonna make it a place where people wanna wanna engage and 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 hang around, so I think it's beneficial for all of us. I think it's gonna be beneficial for for in the in the long-term financials of the city. So I think three stories are fine, and I think, I think we should maybe consider lowering the density. I think sixty might be too much. And then, um you know, we are missing two council members, so I think we would wanna maybe have them in on the next one and just, and then we can approve. But I think right now, we're throwing out ideas, and I think those are, I think that's viable.
Yeah, Mayor, and I agree with you and uh Councilmember Garcia. I think that it it would be best for us to discuss it as an entire council, uh as well as. Uh the planning commissioners that they wanna join. Uh but the fact that we're missing two, I think it would be best if we're going to see. Any modifications that we wanna make before we make this adoption, I think that it would be best that we bring it back. We have everything in front of us and. The entire council's present.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I think we've gotten good direction on the density and heights from from the members present, and I think we can. We can put together a little bit of a presentation, charrette, show some examples. Looking at a a little, a little lower threshold on these densities and heights. So I think we got good direction to come back to you and hopefully present it in a way we we can. Quickly uh ascertain exactly where the the council wants to go. But thank you.
Yeah, and I think so far, so far, it's a good sign that we're in, the three of us are in consensus, right? So I think, I think uh, you know, I think it's a good. Conversation, I think it's a good start. Once we get uh the other two council members in here, I think, you know, they they can um share their opinions and see where they stand.
Yes.
But I, but I have, I think we might be okay starting there. Okay, so I think, is that uh Ben, clear enough direction for today?
Yes, um Mayor and City Council, thank you. Um that is clear direction. Also wanted to. Um if there's any further direction on open space or uh desert areas designated for potential plazas. Uh that that it, that would be another uh theme. And also, there has been some discussion about the the drive-throughs. In general, as as the council knows, they they are not allowed in the current, and they're not contemplated to be allowed in the. In the uh in the proposed new updated specific plan, but if there's any comments related to drive-through uh drive-throughs. Um we'd wanna uh hear that. We can also carry over that discussion to, since we're gonna have another discussion, we can carry that over to the next one, but just food for thought.
Yeah, and I think the the drive-throughs is another one, right? And I know that we wanna try to tend to stay away from car usage and and drive-throughs and. So, you know, I know, and I know that council has discussed it before, and I think the idea before, by considering the drive-throughs is that we could potentially bring in. Um you know, alternatives that we don't already have in the city, creating a a more diverse. Um a more diverse uh downtown, right? So I think one of the biggest issues that are downtown is that our our anchor stores are are grocery stores. And so I don't think those grocery stores are gonna leave anytime soon, and I I also don't think anybody's gonna walk to the grocery store anytime soon. Especially since you don't get bags anymore, right? So. So, you know, it's 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 trying to find a, a, I think it's trying to find a creative way to enti- So, you know, it's 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 trying to find a a, I think it's trying to find a creative way to entice. Some sort of anchor so that we can get the flow into the downtown and and kind of build around that. If that makes sense.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so some something to keep in mind, and I think that'll be a good discussion as well for for the whole council to have in the next open uh in the next study session.
Mayor, maybe we can have that. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember.
Okay, sorry about that. Maybe we can have that conversation around the non-conforming uses and we can revisit the drive-throughs and maybe uh, you know.
Kind of cut off.
Yeah, I think.
I think she might have cut off, huh?
Can you hear me?
Oh, we can hear you now, there you are.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, I was just suggesting that we can, maybe we can take up the conversation about non-conforming uses also. You know, that would be part of the study session is to talk about the density, um the height. And then non-conforming uses perhaps.
Yeah, and I I I think that's a good way to to see things. How can we? How can we use that to the city's advantage so that we that we can stay involved in how downtown? Kind of flourishes, right? So, yeah, something to keep in mind, and then maybe we can kind of uh focus in a little bit uh more on those type of usages at the next study session.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we um move on, uh Kaiser, based on. On the direction that we've received, uh just based on how far we've moved along with the plan. Uh and looking at density and looking at height, uh. Uh and also uh park space, I I think the non-conforming thing, that's something that's easy, that can be modified in the plan, but based on your. Assessment and our and our um uh our tight budget for for this project since we're at the uh at the tail end of it. As far as uh timing and and structural changes to the plan, do you see significant? Is it is it large or is it uh or can it be doable?
Oh, it's always doable. It requires a uh significant amount of work because um we have to go back and. Uh redo the vision, redo the drawings, uh redo the 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 plans. Um and it, you know, a change here precipitates all twelve documents, so it's actually creating completely new draft. Um so it's gonna have some budget implications.
Yeah, thank you for.
Yeah, yours what I'm hearing, um you know, I think that what the consensus that I heard was. That there are three council members and we need to hear from five, but the general direction from the three that we are hearing today is. Uh that uh three stories is uh what they would like to uh see as a starting point uh within the downtown. Um they would like to have some added discussion about non-conforming users. Uh and uh they would like to allow drive-throughs for those three points.
A limited amount of drive-throughs, I think we should specify, very limited if possible.
Un unlimited?
Very limited.
Oh, oh, okay.
The other way to think about this, Mayor, would be to maybe, uh you know, you can you can create some areas uh outside your core. Um so you you could think about the core being more walkable, where you promote uh uh walking. And allow the outer perimeters, such as, you know, the Starbucks or Baldwin Park. Um uh so the outer skirts of the downtown may allow drive-throughs. Uh but the inner core is select area within core, uh you may want to restrict those type of users, so that's that's a thought about geographically. Uh limiting it, but um I I don't know how else you limit it, you allow it one place, uh you have to allow it. Um in in comparable districts elsewhere.
Thank you, Kaiser. Um so with that said, I just want to uh advise the city council uh uh. Uh that, you know, based on, based on these, uh based on this clear direction. Um is going to require a significant amount of uh work, essentially, probably as as Kaiser mentioned. Uh starting from the beginning, uh to really look at these, this is gonna require uh community meetings uh to do that. Uh we are in a very limited budget, this coincided with the um housing element. Uh which we needed a housing element uh adopted and approved uh by the city by October fifteenth of this year. Uh uh because of these changes, these significant changes and further uh study sessions for discussion. Uh keep in mind that I I just want to uh put it out there that keep in mind that we will not have. Uh a an approved adopted housing element uh as required by the state. There are some significant um uh uh consequences for not having an approved the housing element. Because this housing, this downtown specific plan coincided with the housing element. Um uh just a couple of things that I just wanted to know, one consequence that the state um uh uh. Can come down on the city is uh removal of any uh the ability for this the city to apply for any further grant funding. Uh the second one is removal of any existing grant funding the city has received. Um and then third, um uh the state attorney general could uh. Uh impose fines not to exceed six hundred thousand dollars. So there are some, this was all, this was reported in our housing element update. Uh progress reports to the council, um but uh again, we're we. And lastly, we'll require a negotiation uh with our our consultants, not only the uh. The downtown specific plan consultant, but also our housing element. These are grant funded. Um and we're required to produce uh a document, but uh because of the additional time, I just want the council to be aware that. Um uh there are some consequences uh with these with these changes, especially given the limited budget. Uh in the grant funds that we did receive from the state uh to see this project uh uh through. Uh but I did anyways, I just wanted to advise the council on that, and we'll we'll follow up further um uh with the status uh at a later time.
Ron, can you help us, can you walk us through and help us understand what uh what? Like, why do we start from this from the ground up at this point?
Uh I think Kaiser can can uh share a little more on. How the effect of looking at density, because the densities that were proposed um. Uh and again, looking at the core, looking at our existing downtown and setting those densities. Um and then working alongside with our housing element consultant have drafted a document. Um uh that analyzes those densities to support meeting uh the the arena numbers. So you uh going from five, four story, five stories to three stories, and right now we're not getting clear direction on what densities the council is comfortable with. Um uh uh has an effect on how the buildings are designed, and Kaiser, you can you can uh. Give a little more specificity on that, on how that impacts the the exist, what we've what we drafted so far.
Right, I I I don't think it's it's recreating the entire draft, entire document, but there are specific sections in that document that make reference to building heights. And there are specific diagrams in the document uh that make reference to building height and uh. Uh density, and as uh Ron was mentioning, um there is environment documentation that is underway that will have to be reassessed. Although uh that's probably good news for them because they're now analyzing uh fewer impacts than more. Um but nevertheless, they have to uh um make those those edits and those changes. Um so all of these things, they precipitate in in throughout the document. Uh and we have to go in and surgically make those changes uh throughout throughout the document. Um so a a assuming that uh, you know, once we get uh direction from the five members of the council uh at the next meeting. Um we 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 will, we will start that work. Whenever that next meeting happens, we'll make uh. We'll we'll start the surgically amending the entire draft document to make it consistent throughout, because you don't wanna amend the code. When the plan's talking about one thing, um that needs to be consistent throughout the infrastructure, the impacts. All need to be consistent and measured for whatever uh the council gives direction on.
Great, so Ron, how, oh, sorry, how soon can we plan the next meeting?
Uh I think it's too early to say, um there's a there's a considerable amount of work that needs to be done that I need to coordinate with the consultant and then. Uh also go over our 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 budget, um we have a a finite budget, um and and this movement is gonna cause. Um for council consideration to approve an amendment to the uh scope of services, so.
One thing, uh Mayor and Council, we could look at, I I don't want to make any promises. Is we have this uh two weeks, we have another session on the housing element. Since we're when since we're already impacting that discussion with this discussion. Maybe we can fit in, maybe we can fit in this discussion about density, these other things. And get that done and then shorten or even remove the housing element discussion. Um because it's gonna impact it anyway, so um let us let us look at that and then we'll we'll get back to back to the council.
Thank you, uh good point, Ben.
Yeah, Ron?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Councilmember Damian. I have a couple of questions for you. So were the intentions of this joint council meeting for us to adopt this plan tonight?
No, 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 the, this is the draft uh document uh that we've presented to you. Uh um in preparation, because as Kaiser mentioned, the environmental documentation uh is in process. And so that that takes a considerable amount of time. Um we were looking for adoption before planning commission and council uh going in August. So tonight was just to show you the draft uh of the plan, which mostly. Uh entirely uh consisted of what we presented to the community and and it was provided direction at that point. Um so we were hoping that if there was any minor uh not major structural changes. Uh that we could make that would uh allow us to continue in that process for adoption in August. Uh but uh what was not require, was not requesting for you guys to um to make a motion. It was more just to get some di- uh direction on any minor modifications uh to the plan since we released it uh a little over a month ago.
Yeah, so that was that was uh that was, I was I was under the impression of that as well, so with that being said, since we are, I mean. We really haven't said, you know, exactly what modifications we want to make, other than, you know, the five story to maybe four, three stories. Uh we, you know, we just basically requested, we want the other council members here so that we can decide, you know, if we want to make modifications, what type, so. What concerns me is that now we may be going over budget and have to, you know, pay for that. But wasn't the purpose of this meeting for us to have any type of modifications made?
You know, the modifications made, because we did some extent, you know, we we held community means, as Kaiser mentioned, we 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 went through thorough. Uh discussions with the businesses within the downtown, uh major uh business owners such as the shopping centers and. Uh community members during the charrette, uh we were not anticipating uh significant structural. Uh changes like a density, um I think height is as height um was mentioned, Kaiser mentioned that uh. Not not a a big issue, but density is a uh is a major component that uh that needs to be addressed in our housing element. Um and as Kaiser mentioned, has to be uh 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 re uh. Looked at in the plan uh for for the revisions, so to answer your question, large uh structural changes. Uh such as the ones that were recommended tonight, we were not uh anticipating.
Yeah, and and then and also keep in mind that uh as Councilmember Garcia mentioned earlier, uh this is uh uh, you know. We do have a a new, fairly new council, and some of us have not been involved in extensive conversations or joint council meetings uh. That you guys have had in the past. I mean, we I try to watch the videos that you guys send out, but you know, we never really had the opportunity opportunity to give our input. So I think that, you know, by us coming back and as a as a group and trying to figure out what's the best way to to go with this downtown specific plan. And hopefully, there's not many modifications, we should stay within budget. Uh speaking of the budget, my last question to you is, what is the overall cost for this downtown specific plan?
So the overall cost is within what was granted to us by uh by HCD, the state, uh which is three hundred and ten thousand dollars.
And we may possibly be going over that budget?
That is correct.
Perfect, thank you.
Great, so I think.
Um Mayor, just really quick, um I just want to say, I know that this is the, this is not the first time I've mentioned. Um you know, like having a range of density run, um you know, I don't think that. I don't know, there there shouldn't be any shock or surprise uh where I stand on. On this, because I know we've had conversations, uh maybe not extensive conversations with Mr. Kaiser, but. Um my question is, since there has been. You know, a proposed high density, um and then an environmental, just I I guess assessment attached to this. Would it make sense to to hold, you know, um? To hold these, like what is being presented today as like the maximum amount that somebody could, that a developer could. Request and and include in their in their application or their development. Um but create a baseline that gives us. You know, so that, in other words, let's say a developer comes to the city and says, you know, I want to propose a four-story structure. And at baseline, we say, well, you know, according to our specific plan, you are allowed a three-story structure, but. With um, you know, city planning commission and city council review. Um you know, there is this discretionary action that could be provided so that you could. Go up to the four stories or so that you could go up to um the five stories where where that might be allowed. So that there's a range, and I know that you and I have talked about this in the past, where, you know, could there be a range, a baseline of. You know, where we are comfortable to a maximum um to meet. Some of these Rena numbers and and some of these other requirements. Um but it gives us full control to say no, you know, to develop developer that comes in and says. I want to build a five-story structure and it doesn't make sense for our downtown, and we could say no, because it just, you know. So could we approach it that way?
Councilman Garcia, what what you're suggesting is already part of this plan, uh I I think uh. Whatever you just said uh is 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 how we intend uh this to operate. Um anybody coming in knows that the maximum they can build in those four corners is a four-story element. The fifth story is a discretionary uh and it requires site plan approval, and for a discretionary approval, that's what it is. Uh you 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 can be arbitrary, uh uh you can almost be arbitrary, unreasonable and capricious uh in in your decision. Uh you don't have to justify it, um because it's discretionary, uh it's not something that's allowed by right. Uh it requires a site plan approval, so you retain that full capacity to say no. Uh and in addition to that, you have the town architect uh working um that would. Allow you to he- and and help you to uh make those arguments. Why this is not a compatible project uh in the downtown area. Um so i- if if you'd like, we can take a look at that language and maybe bring it up front and center and make it more. Um more clear that that's how this is intended to operate. Um but I I'm glad you brought it up, because that is perfectly how we want this to operate.
Mm-hmm. Well, maybe it's something that we can discuss, you know, again, at the next round and have the full council present. And really understand clearly what would be allowed by right and what would be allowed with discretionary review and what those discretionary actions are exactly. Um so that I I think what we want to do is we want to retain that control to make sure that any development that comes into downtown. Is one that we believe, you know, works for the landscape of our downtown. I don't think we want to give that up. Um so if, yeah, if we could have a more in-depth conversation around that at the next. You know, part um study session part two, then that would be helpful.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council, and we'll see when we can do that, possibly in two weeks, if if that's possible, we'll we'll look. We'll meet quickly on this and and see what we can achieve.
Okay, that works.
Is there any more questions or concerns?
Hold on one sec, let me just check, I'm sorry, hold on one second. I mean, so any of the attendees want to make any comments, raise your hand or in the chat box. I don't want to miss any, I had to check the checkbox real quick. All right. So we got one comment in the chat box. Thank you, Steve. So page 104 describes different allowed parking locations on a site based on podium surface parking versus subterranean parking. Is there a definition, the word subterranean, in the specific plan? Or should the plan default to utilizing the building code definition of story above grade plane in order to determine whether parking is considered subterranean? Kaiser?
Right, we can certainly clarify that further. We define the building height, which is measured from the sidewalk. So anything below the sidewalk is considered subterranean. And we can certainly clarify that by defining that term subterranean if it hasn't been defined.
Thank you, Steve, for that comment. Okay, I don't see any raised hands. Looks, oh, we got, we got one raised hand. Let's see, Mark, if you can unmute Beatrice Sedible?
Thank you. I have that question, I know this. All this project and design is by downtown. My question is to fill it out of all the numbers of the housing to be building need to be in the downtown area or can be in others areas of the city?
Yeah, so you, yes, we, under this plan, as I was, as we were describing earlier on, most of the density is being looked at in the downtown. Our housing element consultant, based on the downtown specific plan, most of those units are being counted to meet the arena within, but within the downtown. But yes, we, the city can look at other areas of the city for, for increase in number of units.
And another question is, for this specific plan, are you talking only about the numbers of the units need to be there, need to be there? And are you not talking about like, something like eco-friendly environment? Or something like water, recycle water process, something to make more ecological and more healthy, and environment healthy all this downtown? It's only for, only present the project that a housing needs, cover the housing need. But when you start to talking about how to make this more eco-friendly?
So just to highlight, Kaiser, if you want to add a little bit as far as.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Sustainability, I mean.
Well, a quick, quick answer, I think I would recommend that you read the specific plan page. And ma'am, I'd be happy to send this to you or Ron, if you send me your email. There's a section that talks about green infrastructure, which precisely talks about all the things that you mentioned, requiring a hydrology study to mimic the site's pre-development runoff by choosing the appropriate low-impact development practice, demonstrating that the flood levels upstream and downstreams of the project are not raised and certainly meeting all of the NBDS, EES standards. In addition to that, there's a lot of other provisions in the plan that talk about how to be green. There's going to be an emphasis on reducing the greenhouse gases, which will be also assessed in the environment documentation. And that's related to the mixed-use pattern, which is reducing the reliance primarily on automobile to get around. And the trees, which help with greenhouse gases as well.
Thank you, Kaiser.
Thank you. I participated in almost all meetings, the study session. Do you have, thank you for inviting, inviting me and by the subject about these practitioners. But I have the other question, I'm sorry, I don't want to take too much of the good time. But we're talking a lot about mixed use. But I don't remember talking about inclusionary housing in this downtown. Is that when we are going to talking about that?
No, good question, Beatrice. So the city right now, we've been, we've informed the council through our Measure H funds. Our consultant will be performing a feasibility study to determine what the appropriate percentage of affordable housing for an inclusionary zoning ordinance. That's coming to the council in late October, November. But this plan is not going to specifically address inclusionary housing. But fast forward, hypothetically, with the plan getting approved and then the council, if the council desires to move forward with an inclusionary housing ordinance, what that does is says that, that any future housing, whether it's, you know, 6%, 7% of housing proposed in the downtown has to be for affordable units. So this plan doesn't, by doing an inclusionary housing ordinance, doesn't affect the specific plan or need changes. It's going to be an inclusionary housing ordinance for all housing development throughout the city.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you, Beatrice. Okay. Let's see here. Looks like I haven't got any more comments. Anyone else, please raise your hand, otherwise I think those are all the comments that we've received.
Great, so.
Perfect.
We're all good, right?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your participation tonight and all your comments and taking time out of your busy schedules to join us tonight for the study session.
Yeah, and thank you, Ron and staff, and of course Kaiser and his team. I think, you know, it's an important conversation that we're having on how we're going to shape all of our parks for the future. So looking forward to the continued discussion. At this point, there's no more questions, comments or concerns. I believe we are ready to adjourn the meeting. And so at this moment, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? None, meeting adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Good night, thank you.